Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 7, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coastal Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. This meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Reason.
I will now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Present.
Mayor John Moore is absent this evening. Jen Souter.
Here.
Daniel Shenomeo is absent this evening. Bob Zuckerman is absent this evening. Kathy McLallan.
Here.
Vice Chair Mike Gunnin.
Here.
And Chairwoman Kerzak.
Here.
First item on the agenda is a resolution for 512 and 514 Summerfield Avenue. Does any, do any Board members have any concerns? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Yes.
Jen Souter.
Yes.
Kathy McLallan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin.
Yes.
Okay, the next item up on the agenda is the views at North Shore.
Madam Chairwoman, I've reviewed the notices. They're in proper form. We have jurisdiction perceived this evening.
Terrific.
Well, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I am here today on behalf of the applicant, APW Redevelopment LLC. We are here tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for development on Block 4302, Lot 2. The applicant is proposing two buildings, each with 27 condominium units, along with associated parking. We have been working on this application for some time, initially submitting to the TRC back on March 11 of 2024. We've gone through the TRC process. We've gone through the council process presented there, and my client was designated as a subsequent developer by way of a signed subsequent developer agreement. This evening, we have no proposed variances, but we do have some design relief required from the architectural guidelines, which we'll go over in detail. I have four witnesses. We'll start with architecture, then go into civil engineering, then landscaping, and finally wrap up with our planner. And so with that, and having acknowledged that we do have jurisdiction for proper noticing, I would like to start with architecture.
Sir, please raise your red hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
It's Adrian Melia, K-D-R-I-A-N. Last name is Melia, M-E-L-I-A.
Let's have my staff summon, please. Please raise your red hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Say hello, Board Leader.
Thank you.
If I could just do one thing, if you don't mind, for the public that's here, just so that if you haven't been here before, just so that you understand what the process is, where your input comes into play. Once every witness is finished, like let's say in this particular situation, the architect is going to speak. If you have any, after they're finished, we will ask if the public wants to ask any questions of the architect about anything that they said during this period of time. And then you can come up and say, hey, you know, I have a question about this that you said, that that you said, or whatever. And you'll be able to do that after every witness that comes up, whether it's the architect, whether it's the planner, landscape architect. Also, at the very end of all the presentations, you will have the ability to do a three-minute comment about the project as a whole, if you would like to. You have that option. So just so that we're clear as to what public participation is and when. So, you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to offer you, as an expert in the field of architecture, to set that up. Can you please describe your background, education, and experience?
Certainly. I graduated from Trinity College Dublin in Ireland in 2002. I'm a partner at MBMK Architecture. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2011. My license is in good standing. And I was lost in front of this board for the delta across the street.
So we'll offer Mr. Melia as an expert in the field of architecture.
Jennifer, excuse me. Why don't we have the resolution that forwarded this matter from council to the planning board marked into evidence? The referral from the council?
Not sure that we submitted that.
All right, okay. I'm going to move it in on behalf of the city.
Sure.
Okay, I'll let you finish. Go ahead.
Excellent. If you can just start by orienting everyone to the property that's in question here.
Certainly so. Again, I'm a partner at MBMK. We are the architects for the project. We collaborated with the in-house architect, Deke O'Nanian. And the drawings that are on the screen right now are what I'm going to refer to for this presentation. If we look at the second sheet, I'm just going to zoom in to the block that the site is located on. So our site is bounded by four streets. Webb Street to the west, D Lake Drive to the north, Kingsley Street to the east, and Eighth Avenue to the south.
Just to pause for a moment. I believe this is the set that we submitted about 10 days ago to the Board. Do you need us to mark this set of architectural plans or not?
Whatever you testify from should be marked as for identification.
So we'll mark this package, which consists of a number of sheets. Can you tell us how many? As A1, it'll be the...
It's 27 sheets. And it's dated March 27, 2025.
Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
Okay, so around the site, to the south, it's a vacant lot right now, but there are 45 townhomes approved. To the east are a number of single-family homes. There's a two-story condominium project. D Lake Drive, obviously, is to the north. And then the Asbury Tower to the east is 27 stories. There's also a water treatment plant to the east. Currently, the site, the block, has two buildings on it. The Miramar, which is a five-story condominium project, and the Kingsley Arms, or 200 D Lake Drive, is a rental project that's eight stories tall. And our parcel runs around these two buildings, and it is currently used to store building materials. Just for the benefit of having everybody understand what is being proposed, I'm going to skip to the renderings. So this is Sheet 19 of our renderings. And this is labeled aerial view from the corner of Eighth Avenue, which is here. I'm sorry, here, and Kingsley Street. So you can see, this is the Miramar, and this is Kingsley Arms. And these are the two projects. These are the two projects that are being proposed. They're both mirrors of each other, about 27 units each. And I'll just, there's four of these views, one from each corner. So this is the view from Kingsley and D Lake Drive, looking south. And here's the Miramar in the background. Then we move around to, this is D Lake Drive and Webb Street. Again, the Miramar here, D Lake Drive to 200 D Lake Drive here. And lastly, the view from the corner of Webb and Eighth Streets. So it gives you a sense of the scale of the project and how it relates to the two buildings that are currently on that block. Again, it's 54 residential units and 111 parking spaces. Obviously, this project has evolved. We've been in front of TRC, City Council. And what you're looking at right now is the product of a lot of changes that have been made in the last few months. I'm going to start with the Sheet Z2, go back to, I'm sorry, Sheet 2, where there's a site plan. And you can see that it's the two projects, but there's also a shared one-direction surface parking lot between the two buildings. So our two buildings are shaded. The Miramar is here. 200 D Lake Drive is here. Moving on to the third sheet in the set, this is the floor plans. So both buildings are virtually identical, but on the first floor, it's parking. And over the parking is three levels of residential units. The breakdown is here. I can go into it, but it's one beds, two beds, one beds with dens, and two beds with dens. And they range from 710 to 1,265 square feet in area. Each of those units has its own private deck, and there's also a common roof deck that's shared between condos. Just taking a look at the specifics of the parking plan. There is an electrical room, a sprinkler room. There's a compactor room, bicycle storage. There'll be room for at least one bicycle per unit. And we've shown 32 bikes here. On the next floor up, this is the first residential floor, so you access it either via stairs, or there's a wheelchair lift. You come up onto the first floor, and the mailboxes are inside the vestibule, and there's also space for packages. Moving on to the building elevations. So it's four stories in total. The height to the main roof is approximately 44 feet. And the height to the tallest point on the building, on the roof, is 58 feet approximately. I'll just skip to Sheet Z12. So this is a rendering from the street from the intersection of Kingsley and Eighth. And just to speak about the architecture, it's an interpretation of Mediterranean Revival with facade symmetry, arched windows, balconies, metal railings. We have tiled roof accents and a neutral color palette. This is the style that's espoused in the waterfront redevelopment plan, and it's evident in many of the historic buildings in the city, as well as some of the newer ones. Some of these examples, you can see on the wall behind you, there's Santander Condominium, the Charms Building, which has since been demolished, United States Post Office, which is right across the street from us, and the Hotel Monterey, which is up on the wall also. Looking at Sheet Number 9, we talked about the building materials. Again, the color palette, it's white, beige, terracotta used. They're in the red quadrant, which is recommended by the WRP. The base of the building is parched concrete with the remainder of the facade clad in two cement board colors. The lighter one is at all of the elements that are proud, and the darker shade is at all of the recessed areas, the balconies. All of the balconies have supporting brackets, and they're clad in cement board at the sides and on the underside, and they all have metal rails. Moving further up the facade, we have decorative elements such as fogable vents and pergolas that are all built out of durable engineered materials. Now, it was mentioned that we do need a lot, a number of design waivers or relief from the redevelopment plan. So I'll just go through all of the ones that are listed in CCH's report. And I'm going to refer to Section 2.8B, which is on page 9 of that report.
Just for the record, that's the report dated March 21, 2025, correct?
Correct. So that section lists the conflicts with the architectural guidelines. So I'll read through them while responses are unread. Things make it easier for people to follow. So the first point is the building elements, the attachments, their material. Balconies and railings shall be made of wood or metal. And the comment says the balconies are masonry, metal railings. So the balconies are primarily clad in that cement board in the large format to resemble stucco. So we do need relief for that. Next comment, number two, building elements. The balconies shall be visibly supported by brackets and shall not exceed three feet in depth. Balconies on the front facade where the building entrance is located have the appearance of being supported by brackets, but the other balconies are cantilevered without brackets. Now, I'll just address that. Before this, we received this report, some of the balconies were missing the brackets on the renderings. We've since corrected that. So all of the balconies will have these brackets. It says all balconies exceed three feet in depth. So the balconies protrude from the front face of the building by only two feet. But if you measure it, obviously, back to where it's recessed, we do exceed that three feet, so we do need relief for that.
So how many feet do you go to?
It's six feet deep in total.
So it's six feet instead of three?
Correct.
But only two feet beyond the face of the building, correct?
Correct.
And so what's the requirement for that extension? Is two feet? What does three feet in depth mean as a requirement? Does that mean that...
So the design guidelines.
Right.
When you're talking about Mediterranean Revival, you know, balcony is just supposed to be like a small area you step out onto, you're not having, you know, tables and chairs and whatnot.
Okay, right.
We actually revised the land development regulations to clarify the difference between a balcony and a deck as a balcony being smaller and the deck being at least five feet. So, you know, under the land development regulations, these are technically decks. But from an architectural, you know, sort of historic or traditional classical theme, a balcony is this much smaller, more intimate space.
Okay.
And that's what the waterfront design guidelines were looking for.
Okay, so really has nothing to do with how much it extends?
No.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Next point, number three. The postal number shall be placed on the principal building facades and on the alley and rear lane. So we will add those. We do have renderings that show, I'm sure I'll go back to it, where we've added the addressable of the entry, right? The next comment was the number four, the building elements. The doors, including garage doors, shall be painted wood or composite wood. All entrance doors to the building are metal bars. Garage doors have not been specified. They appear to be solid metal. This is correct. We do need relief for this. We're not using wood.
So what's correct? Is it's correct that it's going to be solid metal?
It's correct that it's solid metal, and it's correct that we need relief for not using wood.
And the solid metal are the garage doors, correct?
Correct, yes.
Which will point out momentarily where those are.
The next comment relates to the window types. It says the plans do not specify if the windows are operable, but the application states that some fixed windows are proposed. There appear to be fixed panes used in the arch top. Small square windows used above and below the large rectangular case of window. The applicant should clarify. All windows appear to be flush mounted. So it's probably better to just show this on the rendering. So we do have fixed windows. All of the central sections are operable, but the round tops and the sections below are fixed. So we do need relief for that.
And that lends itself to the overall Mediterranean style, correct?
Yes. The windows are also flush. They're not recessed, so we need relief for that as well. Next comment, number six. The doors, except garage doors, shall be side-hinged, no sliders. So we are using sliding doors on the project, so we do need relief for that. Next comment is number seven. The openings on a frontage must remain within a void-to-sol ratio of no more than 45% in each facade, measured independently. So we have actually provided calculations for the solid-to-void. Right here, it is Sheet 24 of the set. We provided the ratios, and the north and south of each. The front elevation will be at the 45%, and the side elevations will be at the 29%. So they do comply. Next comment. The solid-to-void ratio at the frontage includes fenestration, porches, arcades, loggies, and balconies. Minimum requirement for fenestration on facade shall be 20%. The plans do not contain calculations. The window area of each facade, the applicant should provide the necessary calculation. So again, similar to the calculation provided here on Sheet 23, we have the calculations for each of those facades to show we comply with that requirement of minimum of 20% on each facade.
So I'm assuming that our professionals didn't have access to these calculations before?
That's right.
So therefore, they said they were missing.
When we received the reports, we made sure to update and get the calculations that we could be prepared for tonight.
But wait, I'm sorry, Jim, just one second. But help me out here. It's like, once you receive the report, that's when this three, this document for 327 was created. Is that right?
That's correct. We wanted to make sure we were prepared for the evening.
After you got the report from it. Okay.
Correct.
Go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to ask you to check your mic and see if it's on.
Yep, I think it's on. Can you hear it?
It is just hard to hear you.
Okay.
Just a quiet.
No, thank you. I'll make sure I get closer.
The next comment is number nine. The design of the building consists of multiple cantilevered balconies, which are located on the indent parts of the facade. So we do need relief for that, where, again, the balconies, first of all, they're on the street facades as well, because they're 10, but also, it says they're to be used sparingly. We have one per unit for practical purposes. Every unit on the project has its own balcony or deck, we should call it. So we need relief for it, number nine, and number 10. Number 11. Again, we touched on this, with the windows. It cannot be determined if there are fixed or oning windows used on any of the buildings, front facades. The applicant should verify the proportion of windows to determine compliance. So I did have confirmation that the proportion of the windows used, they're primarily 32 inches by six feet in height, or 36 inches wide by six feet in height, do fall within those required proportions of one is to 1.6 and one is to 3. However, these still have fixed bottoms, arch tops, and sliding doors, so relief is still needed. Number 12. Under no circumstances shall the windows be installed flush with the outer surface of the facade. They are installed flush, so we do need relief for that. Number 13, window sills should be provided. We have not provided window sills, so we do need relief there. Number 14 relates to building articulation. And what we're talking about here is one such articulation may acknowledge the corner of a block, another may emphasize an entrance, yet another may receive visual access on adjacent streets. So the buildings don't display a technique in that manner, so we do need relief.
Right, before we keep going, if you don't mind, on that page, everything you're asking for relief, 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 you're not saying why you could not do it.
Yes, we will get to that.
You'll get to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Number 15. The frontage of the building and its character is a primary contributor to the nature of the pedestrian experience and influences pedestrian activity at the street level. Frontage is that elevation which faces a public street or a public open space. Use of the lower tanning water patio on terrace of the frontage where the building entrance is helps to engage these elevated sites, but due to the extreme elevation, they remain disconnected from the public realm. This disconnection is intensified on Webb Street and 8th Avenue frontages for no measures, where such measures have not been provided. So again, it's no site-specific articulation that was proposed there, and so we need the relief.
And once again, that started at TRC. That's two meetings ago.
Right, so what we will get to there is why are the buildings the way they are? And in part, this will be addressed by Mr. Curly on the flood hazard regulations.
Sorry, number 16. I'll just quickly read through this. On the entrance facade, the center of each building's base is obscured by retaining walls, elevated patio, and extensive series of steps. The rest of the base, including other street-facing facades, are finished in contrasting color of parox, punctuated by random patterned on-screen openings that allow natural ventilation to the garage. So my comment here is that the base openings are centered with above and loubers have been added. So we did actually address some of this. Again, the letter was written before this set of drawings were issued. So we did have a chance to address some of these.
I'm sorry, Jim, yeah, can you just pop to, do you have an image of the loubers?
Get one up on the front. So right here, if I zoom in. So we've added them all. They were open previously. And if I just navigate around to the side, what's not shown here, but we will speak about, is that in addition to adding these loubers and addressing some of these comments about the parking. The parking not being masked. This is Sheet 15. The parking not being masked, we are going to introduce taller planting along here up to at least the top of the loubers so that there is less wall visible. Again, this is just on the side elevations. The front elevations have a significant amount of planting and taller trees to mask the parking. Comment number 17. The building's roofs are flat and rooftop elements are obscured by paraplex walls. The elevator and stair towers have not been designed to integrate with the building's architectural character. So the bulkheads for the stair and the elevator, they're not visible from any of these frontages. And so we didn't feel it was appropriate to, were necessary, to clad them with elements that would tie into the architecture.
But they are visible from the Miramar and everybody else above four stories.
Correct. Out of equip, this is comment number 18. Out of parapets may mask any negative impact from the street level as well as horizontally from adjacent buildings. So the design of the building's parapets do not appear to fully screen rooftop equipment and deck facilities from adjacent buildings. Again, as I stated, the rooftop elements are not visible from the street. We try not to make the parapets too tall because of the proximity of the two buildings and the impact it might have on their windows. I'll touch on that further when I pull up an exhibit I've done to show you the impact on the adjoining buildings' views. Number 19, building frontages. The building's base constitutes a parking garage and does not contain habitable space. So at the base of the building, you're meant to surround parking with usable space, so you're not looking at parking. And to give a reason why we didn't do that here, the flood zone restricts us from providing residential at the first four levels. So we can't wrap the parking in a residential use. Signs, the building shall have the name of its architect and the year of its construction inscribed on a plaque and firmly affixed in a suspicious location. So we didn't show that on the plans, but of course, we will add that signage as required to comply with that. So that was the extent of all of the comments on the report.
On the waiver, so let's go...
I'm sorry, the comments on the compliance with the design standards. There's other building-related comments.
Sorry, thank you.
So let's kind of go back to the architecture then and sort of talk about the benefits of the windows and the doors and the balconies that have been chosen here to address some of the comments of why the design has been designed this way. to address some of the comments of why the design has been designed this way.
Okay, so again, the WRP, even though it's from two thousand and two, is promoting the adoption of this Mediterranean Revival look. And that's what we've tried to use to, as the main design of this project. So all of the elements that you see here reflect that Mediterranean Revival appearance. And if we could just talk about modifications that we've made since it appeared in front of the TRC. This is sheet Z twelve. And it didn't look like this initially. And a significant amount of planting has been added in the front. This is Kingsley Street, but this is also what Deal Lake will look like where the front entry is. There's much larger trees, larger planting masking the garage. We've also, the ADA ramp that's right here, we've also made adjustments to the walls around here. At the request of the TRC, they wanted them level, not sloped. We've also extended the steps at their request in the front. This is sheet number thirteen. Again, same thing. This is Deal Lake Drive, same comments. We have much larger trees and within the lot line. This is not even showing the street trees that will be proposed because those will conceal the rendering.
But is this, is this project going to plant those street trees? Or is that by the master developer?
Master developer will do that. And it's actually already underway on certain infrastructure in the north end. But the master developer is required under the subsequent developer agreement to do the infrastructure around this block.
Right, because the block will be completed then, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is the elevation off the street for both buildings the same or is one elevation a little bit different?
They're almost identical with slight variations due to gray changes.
Okay, well, okay.
So this is the Kingsley Street elevation. And one of the changes that was made, which is pretty significant, is that the parking used to be from Kingsley. And we have since added the, we've relocated that entrance to the interior of the plan. So if we go to the side plan, which is this second sheet, you can see that the entries instead of being here and here are now on the interior of the plan where they don't impact neighbors with lights shining into their windows. So there's the entrance to the north building right here. And this is the entrance to the parking garage and the south building. Interior to the left.
And those doors are where we need the relief to have metal garage doors instead of wood garage doors on those parking garage entrances, correct?
Yes.
And where does it show that it's metal?
It does not.
Because I'm just hearing that you're telling me it's metal. It has to be somewhere, right? In the plans to say it's, to show it's metal?
It'll have to be specified on their materials sheet.
Okay, so then you will add that to your material sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Adrian, I'm sorry, can you go to one of those front elevations again that show the stair on the street level? Is there something we can do to that expansive?
Blank wall.
Stucco trapezoid.
Talking about this?
Yeah.
Of course, there's a number of things we could do.
Mediterranean revival, you think.
We could put a plaque for the, I mean, we're open to suggestions. But, you know, we could put the address for the project here. Could be uplift with planting, some lights.
I think we're right on the edge of the right of way there, correct?
We're about two feet in, just based on those steps. We can take a look at it and come back.
Yeah, I can't. We need something.
I understand.
You said plaque before. I was kind of thinking that's where the plaque would go.
Or a little plaque. But I wasn't thinking of plaque that size.
Well, you have the whole.
Is there public art of interest of the board to be added to that?
Something.
Yes, that's an opportunity for a public art space then.
Yes.
And there's another one, too.
But for each of the hand.
But I don't think we have to restrict them to public art if they want to do a plaque or a name of a building. I mean, just something of interest is satisfying me personally.
Maybe the address of the building.
The front gets a solid mass, right? So.
You just need something to break it up. You guys can figure that out.
We can do that. And we'll discuss, I'm sure, at some point. We'll have a break this evening. We'll discuss some issues, some concepts. All right, continuing on.
Can I just ask a question? But I think you were starting to get to it, but then we got sidetracked. The windows being flush and the sliding glass doors, the reasons for those?
So the windows are flush because of the materials we're using. The reason the waterfront redevelopment plan says not to use them is because the expectation is that you're going to use masonry and they're going to be very thick walls. And it's just not really economically viable to build this out of masonry and have very deep walls. There's other considerations, energy code and so forth, where it's very difficult to consolidate them. So that's why they're flush. It's because of the material that we're choosing to use to mimic stucco.
And the sliding glass doors?
Exact same rationale. It's just that that's how the building we intend to construct it. It's within fiber cement panels. And they typically get anchored flush with that material.
No, but why not swim doors instead of a slider?
Just operational, wind having proximity to the, you mean French doors? It's just a preference for practical reasons to not have the doors slamming.
And are they triple sliders or just? Are they, is there a fixed panel on the?
There's a fixed panel and then I'm talking about this configuration. One fixed panel.
And what would be the reason for doing a garage door out of metal instead of wood here in the oceanfront area?
Again, it's just the environment. Wood's going to need to be painted and stained frequently in the salted hair environment. So it's a maintenance issue. So we're better off with doing a metal, like aluminum, that's going to be able to tolerate the environment near the beach.
And does it need to be, the garage door, I'm sorry, need to be solid in order to promote the ventilation through the now louvered openings as that calculation? Or does, do you need it to be somewhat perforated to get the airflow to work right?
No, it, we're not, it's not an open garage. So it doesn't need to be an open garage door. It can be solid. It's also, it's also off the streets. We could have glass openings or in the garage. But in architecture, it's better as a solid panel.
Okay. And how is it actually ventilated, the garage space?
Mechanically.
It is fully mechanical. And where's the exhaust?
Well, we haven't done a calculation on the louvers. But if there's enough louver area, then it will be naturally ventilated.
And if it's not?
Then it will need to be mechanically ventilated.
And when, when do you decide that? When do you calculate that?
It's possible.
What does that mean?
So it's going to be naturally ventilated. We don't need mechanical equipment. So the all of these louvers that you see around the building, so they're limited on the street frontage, but they, there's more, there's more of them as you migrate around the rear of the building to get to the area that you need to.
Okay, so someone did the calculation to figure that out?
Yeah, exactly.
Was that you?
I, we haven't got there yet.
Okay, so nobody did that calculation yet?
Well, it typically happens post-approval to determine exactly what the area is you need.
But we'll be striving for natural ventilation? Is that correct? Continuing on then.
So I had mentioned that we relocated the driveways to the interior. Other changes that were made were we noted that the parapet height on the plans, three feet tall. We added the postal numbers. I didn't actually show that the last time. But you can see here, there's an address which was missing from the previous rendering. So both, this is just a placeholder. It may not be called to on North Shore. But that's, you know, there's a detail also on the plans of the size of those sheets. Five has a signage detail. So it'd be eleven inch high lettering mounted on the top of that entry canopy. Another thing that wasn't clear from the report was the amount of EV charging we were going to provide. Seventeen EV spaces are required and we're providing eighteen. So that's noted up here. Nine electric vehicle charges will be provided per building. So that's eighteen total.
So let me clarify that, that are you the guy that we're going to talk about parking? Because I'm happy to start talking about that. So I just need to know who I have to talk to.
The engineer.
Okay, so we're making believe you didn't say that.
Okay.
Okay, so he will discuss how many EVs and non-EVs? Yes?
Yes.
Yep. Wheel stops were added to the garage and the location of utilities was also added to the plan. So you see gas meters and electric meters all in the back of the building where you're not going to see them from the street. So they're not shown in any of the street renderings because they're all located to the rear. I already touched on the fenestration and the solid to void calculations that were provided. There was also a shadow study done. And I'll just briefly touch on it. So we, really, the impact on the Miramar is limited to, we see in, because it's south of our buildings, the impact is really minimal in summer. But in winter, in the morning, you can see here around nine AM. So this is the Miramar. There will be some shadows cast in the early morning on that building. And then two hundred Deal Lake Drive, again, it's to the east. So in the morning, there's no shadows cast. But as you navigate around to the evening time, it does fall in some shadow, but it's taller than our building. So it's really only impacts the first couple of floors.
When you say the first couple of floors, what do you mean?
So our project is four stories tall. Two hundred Deal Lake Drive is eight stories tall. So it's not going to impact anything above the fourth floor. But the third floor, second floor, and first floor of that building will fall into shadow during winter.
So it's half of the building?
Correct. At certain times of the year. During summer, not so much. You can see here, some of the summer solstice ones, for example, four PM, there's no impact. So in summer, there's little or no impact on shadows on two hundred Deal Lake Drive. When we were designing the buildings, we were conscious of the adjoining buildings. And we put together these two exhibits. This is sheet twenty-six. So this is a facade study on the south building. So this is two hundred Deal Lake Drive, the elevation. And in yellow is our proposed building superimposed in front of it. And the purpose of this exhibit is to show if any of the residents are here or the board, what the impact will be on their windows and who may lose their view. So you can see here, up to the fifth floor, all of these windows will be, to some degree, obscured by the proposed building.
Do you know about how much distance there is between the two buildings?
Yeah, the engineer will talk about it. It's about twenty feet, but he'll get, there's detailed dimensions on the side plans. Same for the Miramar. We did the same study. So this is the building on Deal Lake Drive, superimposed on front of that north-facing Miramar elevation. And we even looked to see what the units were, what the layouts were to see if there were any units that had all of the windows obscured. There is a unit here that where this is a bedroom and this is a living room. And so on three of the floors, we will be obscuring their views. This unit here wraps the corner and they do face west. So we are blocking views on one side, but they do still have views facing west where that unit on each of these levels wraps the corner.
And those, and those units, as you said with the shadow study, I'm assuming we're impacting those units also in the winter?
So we're not because the Miramar is south of us.
So they won't be impacted?
Correct.
Okay, what about the other Deal Lake Drive?
Right.
How about them?
So again, in summer, no issue because the sun will come in between the two buildings. We have enough space between them. But in winter, there will be shadows cast on these windows.
And did you look on those to find out if they were like bedrooms, living rooms? So is it the whole apartment or is it just, like you mentioned on the other?
Yeah, we weren't able to get plans without putting.
Okay, continuing on.
Just in terms of operations. So trash, very typical for a project like this. There is a compactor room at grade level inside the garage. And then at each, I'm sorry, this is sheet three. And both buildings are the same. So they both have a trash room in the garage with a compactor. And each floor has a trash room with a chute. So, excuse me. There's going to be a private management company that takes the trash every day down to the trash room. Trash and recycling, trash obviously goes down the chute. They'll bring the recycling down here and they will cart out the two-yard containers to the curb on the morning pickup and it'll be a private hauler. So I don't know the exact times and the frequency that that will occur. But I'm sure that will need to be determined by the operator.
Can you show us or does someone else show us where those trash cans will be? And will they be at the Miramar or two hundred Deal Lake Drive? Or where are they going to be, these trash cans, once they are placed on trash day?
Okay, so the plan currently is for the trash truck to drive into the site.
Okay, so it's into the site?
Yes. So when I say take them outside, I mean.
Okay, so you're putting them there?
It'll be staged on the site so that there's no impact on the neighbors.
Okay.
Bicycle storage. I mentioned that there will be at least one space per unit. There's twenty-seven units in each building. We're shown enough room for thirty-two bicycles currently in this room in the garage. There's also an exit door to get in and out of the garage if they need to or they need to access the bike room. And lastly, I mentioned packages in mail previously. So there's adequate space here, both sides of the lobby, if not on one side, for shelves for packages on the first floor of each. And that concludes the presentation unless there's any questions.
Can you talk about lift range? I had a comment about the location of the downspouts.
Sure. On the elevations, we, this is sheet six. We changed the colors of the gutters to be less pronounced. But these downspouts, they're located to the interior. And we, the engineer will talk more about the detention system that's located underneath the parking here.
So you're collecting the flat part of the roof only?
So everything is pitching this direction.
So the pitch roofs and the, nothing on the balconies. Can you get back to the front facade?
Sure.
So that's not getting collected? That shed roof is not getting collected?
These elements here. These elements here, I mean, we can look at how we can collect that also.
I mean, I don't know if it's necessary from an engineering perspective, I just wanna understand. There aren't gonna be any downspouts coming down from these roofs? As an architectural thing?
Yeah, we, we can explore wrapping a gutter around so that it comes back onto the main roof and then from there finds its way to the back.
Is there any, yeah, that's just gonna go into the planter bed at the base, right?
Right, I mean, it doesn't, yeah, there's setbacks to the sidewalks.
Except the one right by the stairway. That'll go right on people's heads, so we need to find something to do there.
We can explore a solution.
I mean, we need, we need something so that when people are coming into the building, the water's not falling on their heads. Which would be on both sides here and obviously on the other.
Yeah, I'm sorry, for, for that one, again, same solution as the, the corner ones, we can have a gutter tied back, come wrap around and go back onto the main roof. It was really these ones that have. No way to find their way back onto the main roof.
So those gutters would keep the rainwater off the front entrance, right? And those, what's on top of the sliding glass doors, those are pergolas, right, those are not?
Right, those are, those are open, so they don't collect rainwater.
Just a moment on building lighting. Can you discuss the, the fixtures that are proposed?
Yep, so this is sheet ten and there's a number of lights shown here and. Just going through each one, so this was intended to be an up-down decorative fixture either side of the entryway. And underneath the canopy, we had a recessed type LED. And then at the balconies, we had lantern style lights. Now, we had a comment that these lights were not gonna be dark sky compliant because the, the bulb was exposed. So we have found a comparable light fixture that does have that lantern aesthetic, but the light is recessed up into the housings. It is labeled as, as dark sky compliant, because we, we like this aesthetic for the building. With regard to this up-down light, it was mentioned that it's not dark sky compliant, that's true. I would be inclined to eliminate these two lights because the intent was to, to wash the walls with light. And we could do that, but you can't do that in a way that's dark sky compliant, so just for the purpose of compliance, we would eliminate those two fixtures. So in, in short, the lanterns that are shown here, they'll be replaced with a, actually, I have. A cut sheet here, you can see that this is, I guess, an exhibit.
We can label this one A2, and what would you describe this as?
So this is a cut sheet of a dark sky compliant lantern fixture and the light is recessed up into the housing. So you can see it's a lantern, it has the appearance of a lantern, but the, the, the light isn't gonna spill out in every direction because. It's recessed up into the housing.
So are we going to go over in the CCH report, the downspouts, the lighting, is that now?
Because we mentioned it. We've, we've hit pretty much everything that I have in, in my report, I've been following along as he's testified. The only thing I have left is if we could have a broader discussion about. The rooftop screening of the mechanical equipment at least. On the parts of the building that are closest to the Miramar and the Kingsley Arms.
Okay, so the third sheet, the roof plan, these, this graphic was, was missing from the, the plan that we're submitted, but this is where. The condensers are proposed, they're kind of spread out, so it's not one large farm. Zoom in. They're spread out, so they're not one large farm generating or concentrating the noise. And we have a number of elements on the roof that we can use to screen them, the, the railing. That runs from the deck to the bulkhead, the bulkheads themselves and these roof elements, so. I can't say that not every single one will be completely screened, certainly. When you're at the same level as the roof or just slightly above from the Miramar looking down. You're gonna see either a condenser or you're gonna see a screen, you're gonna see a roof because. You know, there's no way to screen the entire roof. Similarly, if you're on the eighth floor of, of the, the Kingsley Arms, the, the project on, on Del Lake. We, we can't really provide a screen without adding structure to the building. You could put a pergola over them, but now you're adding volume and more things that are visible and more height, so it's. The approach we're trying to take here is to use the bulkheads. Where possible to mask the condensers and not add more elements to the roof that are only gonna impact light and air.
And it's the intent for the mechanical equipment to just be at the roof level, is it gonna be on a. A base to elevate it slightly out of water or to give it that vibration resistance?
They're typically elevated a foot or so, just for vibration and sound, but no higher than that.
Do we have the discussion now as to where the condenser units or is that someone else? Where they are?
They're the gray, they're.
Where they're going to be? I'd like them to be somewhere else, so is, do I have that discussion now or is that with someone else?
Where, now, is there a suggestion as to?
Yeah, there's a suggestion, because I don't know what the outdoor rec area looks like or what's on it. So those couple of condensers that are right next to the outdoor rec area. I would prefer them to be a little bit further to the right. Because if you're going to have chairs and people sitting out there in the outdoor rec area. Unless you're gonna put something else there that people won't be right next to them, that's okay. But I don't know what that is, so if somebody else is gonna talk about that, that's fine. So, but, you know what I mean, those couple, it's like two, if you go up, right, those, like those couple, right there. Yeah, it depends, the ones that are close to the outdoor rec area, because we don't know what the rec area looks like or who's gonna be on it, what's gonna be on it. I would always prefer, just like if there was a terrace or a deck, that the condensers are away from people.
Well, we're gonna have testimony about the layout.
That's what, as soon as we have that.
Inform that, so do you wanna put a pin in this?
Oh, we can put a pin in it, whoever wants to talk about it can, as long as, as long as our attorney can tell us. If somebody's gonna talk about it, I'm, I'm willing to wait.
You're asking about like the layout of the outdoor rec area?
Right, just to understand if the condenser should be moved. If there's a reason for them to move.
We'll have our landscape architect talk about the outdoor deck area then.
But, but just to be clear, this is not an unusual statement that I ever make.
No, understood, and I think right now the condensers are located closest to the storage area.
Understood, yes, and also the one that's on the left, that, that corner, it depends on what's there.
It's like a kitchen.
If it's a kitchen.
We'll have our landscape architect go into more detail.
That's cool.
All right.
Other than that, I think we, I think we've hit most of the comments in the CCH report.
So you're okay with the lighting, you're, from your report?
I have to see the, you know, the cut sheet, what he's testified to is satisfactory, that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Can we go back, I didn't talk about it briefly, but the, on the garage level, the side street frontages, there's just a lot of talk about it in TRC and CCH report. And I know you said there was gonna be more landscaping there, more, something to give it more interest, are we gonna see that additional landscaping?
Yeah, are we gonna see the interest?
From, I, I love the architecture of this building, but that is my one concern, is that ground level, garage level side, side.
This is sheet fifteen and I, I did say that we would introduce taller planting along the wall to mask more of this wall, so plants. Not dissimilar from these evergreens, that would come up to the top of those openings, so. That blind wall would be masked.
And, and just, so we're also clear, and I'm assuming you're also speaking about this, there were some other, some other renderings where. Where the plantings were pretty much like this, are we saying that all around, that you're going to bring in higher plantings? All around the louvers?
I will have Mr. Left clarify that when he, the landscape architect.
Okay. All right, we'll wait.
I have a related question which will probably come up with landscape architecture too, but I saw comments in the report and then. Just wanted to clarify the height of the retaining wall on web and eight.
Should I have Mr. Curly answer that?
The engineer.
I'll have Mr. Curly answer that question.
I have one more retaining wall question, because there was also a note about the material of the retaining wall, is it the same as the, whatever's on the, the ground floor?
Correct, it's a, it's, Parax is the product, it's a, it's a stock off, it's applied to it.
Okay.
You say, you say that's a stock off?
Stock off.
Shouldn't that stock off?
Yes.
And it, the notes that guys have a cap on it, is that right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have the landscape architect say what the cap is.
Thanks.
And there's no entrance, so eight, just, I'm, I'm looking at the aerial on sheet twenty-two, but there's no entrances, right, it's all on eighth and web, it's just. Retaining wall with cutouts for benches, but there's no, nobody's coming out of the building anywhere.
And is someone else going to, I know that you spoke about the layout, will somebody else be speaking about the dens? Or, or this is the person?
If you have a question about the floor plans, Mr. Melia can handle that.
So are we adding ventilation in these dens that will probably be used as bedrooms? Windowless bedrooms, so what do we have, what's the proposal?
Typically, the code will dictate what happens there.
On a windowless bedroom?
It'll be required to have mechanical ventilation.
Okay, so shouldn't that be on here, on these plans?
With that level of detail, like I, that's typically something that happens in a construction document and it's reviewed by building department.
It's your, you're asking about the layout of the actual HVAC within?
I'm asking, I'm asking for the dens or the windowless bedrooms, as I affectionately call them. We know that there has to be some sort of ventilation, there has to be some sort of opening, there has to be some sort of ventilation. I'm asking, is that going to be on here or are you saying that that's later?
No, we, we would typically, in a site plan application, we don't have, no applications typically have the interior HVAC layout completed. But all that has to be submitted for building permits and reviewed by the building department to make sure all ventilation and HVAC is up to code. And I just wanna say, am I correct on that, Mr. Melia?
Right, cause, cause with some applications, we have had almost like a, like a window or a louver or a vent or something like that. On the top of, just before the door, we've seen that, I just wanna make, see what, what the intent is here. We'll just put it down there, we just have to make sure that they're vented.
What you're discussing now, though, excuse me, was not, was not mechanical. The architect, Adrian, right, just said that he was gonna do mechanical, so if you do mechanical. Interior mechanics would be shown later if they were to do. That's all right. They were, I'll speak louder, if they were to do natural, like the last application talked about, where they had the open airflow above the door, that's different, so I think.
Okay, so this is mechanical, so it's taken care of that way? Okay, cause we have heard it different ways.
So I'm, I'm sharing, trying to say, she just wants to know if it's gonna be mechanical.
And that's fine.
We don't show right now, if it's gonna be open?
Yeah.
We see nodding in the audience.
Yes, mechanical. So someone will, someone will testify to that.
But it's, it's going to be mechanical, correct? Correct?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it, I am.
We talked about the trash room, you can have a, a room on each floor with a chute, how about recycling, I can handle that.
So in, in the trash room on each floor, this is sheet three. This is the first floor, which is almost identical to the second and third floor, so here's the room behind the elevator. So residents would be responsible for bringing their recycling to this room, which has enough space for a couple of large wheelie bins. They'll dump their trash in the chute, but the recycling will stay in this room. And then it's up to the management company to take the wheelie bins out of this room daily. Bring them down the elevator and store them in the garage in the larger trash room. And that's typically how it operates in a building like this.
Okay, Don, I have a quick question for you. The, if I remember the Waterfarming Development Plan and the guidelines. The balconies are supposed to be in the rear of the building, correct?
Are supposed to be?
In the rear of the building, right on the front side.
That's one of the, the exceptions they need.
Okay, now, in your renderings, in most of the balconies that you show, you show three panes. Are the two on either side fixed in the center of the slider, is that?
So this is sheet nine?
I'm looking at thirteen, but yeah, lots of same.
It's the same condition, there's three panes, two, the center one would be operable. As, you know, a standard patio door and then one of them is a fixed light, so two fixed, center one operable.
Okay, and balconies, according to the guidelines, are supposed to be no greater than three feet. You've got twice that, you've got them at six, right?
Correct.
Why can't you eliminate the, the two-foot cantilever slab? And move your door, no balcony, but move your glass partition to the front of the building?
I think the, it hurts the architecture to pull those forward, you lose depth in the facade. We like these recesses in the facade to be at the depth they are. It helps with it creates shadows and articulation in the building to not have it so flat. Just, and also, you, you're asking if we could just push the whole thing back? Or pull, pull the, pull the, it forward?
Cut, cut off the projecting part, I think is what, what Mr. Neri is talking about.
I mean, they're, they're an element that help the architecture, I think.
But they run afoul of the guidelines?
That I understand, but there's also a practical application to them in that they give. People outdoor space, which I think is important when you're. Living in an apartment, that you have somewhere that you can walk outside, so again, it's deck versus balcony. We don't need the guidelines for a balcony, but they're really decks in a practical sense in that they're big enough, they're intended to be used. Not to just step out on there, not just.
I don't wanna argue with you, but when you look at these things, there are about five different guidelines that these things are in conflict with. It's just something pretty keeping a mind.
But at the same time, does the waterfront redevelopment plan encourage building articulation?
It does, I, I hear your comment, there, there are a lot of relief, there's a lot of relief related comments. Based on how these balconies are set up, but it's, it's due to the nuances of the, the guidelines, I don't think it intends for decks, I think it relates to. Balconies that are an applique to the facade and they're just ornamentation. We don't really want them as ornamentation, we want them as usable elements, so. It's more to do with the language of the waterfront redevelopment plan. It's not our goal to try to comply with that in any way, because these are decks, they're not balconies.
Okay. And another comment or question, when I look at the renderings. I have a little bit of trouble with them because from page to page, they differ, I understand, you know, it's printing issues and stuff. But where do you really show what, what the facades are gonna look like, what the colors are? Do you have anything?
Sure, so, so the, the sheet amon, sheet nine. I mean, this is a 2D flat-on view, a lot of the views we've shown are perspectives, because they're just a little bit more real. But this is the color palette that we're proposing, so it's, it's earth tones, it's from that red quadrant. Of the color wheel that the, the water redevelopment plan adopts and, you know, these are all. Whites and, and reds in, in these colors here, terracotta for, for the accent for the roof. But they're all on those earthy tones and this is pretty much what it's gonna look like.
Is it pretty much or is it, or is this one it's gonna look like?
Well, these renderings are about as realistic as we can achieve, this is what. the end product is going to look like.
So your color scheme here is found on page nine.
Yep.
So could there be more variation? I think, I have no origins going with this because the, the first floor, I know you're really constrained because of the flooding and what you have to do with the stairs and all, but in the, in this, there's more variation. It's this like big swath of beige that, in this elevation, that's bothered me the most. And then in the renderings, it seems to be more variation. But I don't know, as I was thinking the same thing, which is really, this has different, a lighter tone, darker.
I think it's the lighting, the way they've, the way they've lit the facade, because, you know, if you, I, I know what you're saying, Jen, but like the, the garage level, right, as it goes up into that center balcony area and then onto the top level, that's all the same color.
It is here.
And then comes and wraps around the front of the building. So it's a little bit in shadow and then the front is a little more lit and it's just the way he's toned the
Well, I think I'm just asking, can there be more variation? Because it's, my main concern is Eighth Avenue and Webb walking along with the retaining wall and
Absolutely.
Because you're, you know, you're stuck with what you have at the garage, but from a pedestrian standpoint.
Are you saying you want more variation?
I want more variation.
Oh, you want more?
I want more. Because it's the bay, I mean, it's
Yes, it's a lot of
It's the color.
Yep. I, I don't disagree. I think there's something in the redevelopment standards that says there shouldn't be any change in materiality horizontally. And so that's kind of what we're trying to achieve here.
But if you look on nine, you see that, that that's, it kind of hits us in the face on, on slide nine, if you go up, because you're on 12. That kind of hits us in the face right there. And it's kind of like, no, we need something more interesting.
I fully understand. This has been stripped of all of the landscaping though, so it's not really true to what you're going to experience when you're standing outside the building. You know, most of this will be either housing planting or be masked, masked by planting. So I understand the comment.
The structure we most is what Jen said, the side, so Eighth Ave and Webb, and you've already said there's going to be more landscaping there, so I'm interested to see that. And then that front stairwell, like the big flat wall, which you, you also said you're going to show us something or offer us something.
I think we're going to have to provide renderings with these rather than
I agree.
Just talk to it.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw my thoughts in it as well. And I agree with the concern about the, the garage floor. It's very, it's, it's dominate, it will dominate that block walking there. I, I live in that part of town in that concern. I don't know what the options are. I appreciate Jen's suggestion, color variation, and I appreciate that there's, you know, limitations of the, of the flood plain, the flood zone and so forth, but it's, it will concern a lot.
What's the height of the
I don't know what the options are.
What's the height of the stair, that big wall in front of the stairs?
This, it is
From the base? Looks quite high.
To the top, I'm going to highball it. It's approximately six or seven feet.
And are this, are they the same in both buildings? Because in the rendering, that one looks bigger than the other one. I don't know, it's just an optical thing.
One might be a little taller just because of the grade
Yeah.
Change.
I mean, you have like a little person there who, maybe five feet tall, so it looks higher than
So there's a few steps up to it first, correct?
Right. I, I'm discounting these. I'm taking it from here to here, just a blank
I'm wondering from the sidewalk, you know, guessing by what the height
You can add about 18 inches here. So I said seven feet. It's about eight and a half feet.
Well, you understand what our concern is.
Yep.
Okay.
And the retaining wall height, somebody is
I'll ask Mr. Curley to talk about retaining wall heights, correct, Mr. Curley?
Yes.
Yes. Who will be our next witness once we close out on architecture.
You also mentioned wheelchair accessible. Where is, where is that?
So there's a, right on the screen here, I'm on number 12, sheet 12. There's a, an 8D ramp for each building that brings you up to a platform. And you can see here, there's a chairlift
Okay.
mounted to the side entrance. And if we look at the front view, this is sheet Z9, see that chairlift will bring you up to the first floor.
Okay, so on, on both facades, on D-League Drive and on?
Correct. It's the same thing. And again, it's driven by the flood regulations, not having the lobby and the elevator in the flood plain. So this is our strategy to address that.
What's the depth of that staircase and, and does that go right up to the property line or is there unused space between that stairwell and the sidewalk?
So just for, you're asking, is there any space here?
Yeah, and then how wide is this, and how wide is the, is the staircase itself?
Those steps are about 12 inches.
About a foot.
So you two
No, 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 no. I think, I'm sorry. I think that you're talking about the steps
Yeah.
Themselves? The stairs themselves?
How, how wide is, is the stairwell? And then how much additional unused space is there between the stairs and the property line?
I'm just, I'm going to gauge that it's about six feet wide.
And then you said there's an, an additional foot that's between the property line and the stair?
So just based on, on this drawing here, let me, or maybe it's easier to go to the other
And I'll have you pause just for a moment. On that building you were just on, go back to the other one. Under the subsequent developer agreement, those two trees that you see there are actually over the property line and the city council approved them being there. They're actually within the right of way. But we can have Mr. Curley show where the property line is. Those two, the two trees that are there.
So this, this is that large retaining wall.
Okay.
And then we've got two steps in front of it. So if those are about 12 inches each, this is the property line all along this one here. We have about two feet from the property line to the face of that retaining wall.
And then, I'm sorry, remind me how, how wide are the stairs themselves?
Approximately six feet.
There's an area here, there's a significant area between the property line and the sidewalk, just because of the way the right of way line falls. And I can have Mr. Curley address that. But the property line and the sidewalk are actually not next to one another in, for that particular building.
Was there any way on that, I'm sorry, this is kind of like, I'm just trying to, playing my head, like, is there any way to break up or change with the mass of, of the, of the stairwell? Like, you know, that's what I'm just like trying to play with. Is there a way to make them curve? Is there a way to put, is there a way to put a feature where that wall is? You know, just trying to think of what kind of space exists. Like the building I live in has, you know, the stairs that curve around and the water down in between them. So I just didn't know kind of what the space would allow for that would break up the dominance of, of that kind of mass.
And I'll have Mr. Melia address that in a moment. I will say that this building was slid closer to the street there at the request of council. There had been a little more space in the front there, but the goal was to pull the building away from the existing building. So it was slid further to the street, which changed the design of that front, front stairwell. But then I'll let Mr. Melia answer the question. I'm sorry.
I'm just going to open up the civil plans because that little key plan that I keep referring to isn't perfectly accurate. So this is the civil plans that we're submitting to the board. I'm sure that the engineer will be referring to. But this is the accurate rendition of what's going on here. And that's on sheet three of the civil set. So the same, these were, this shows more accurately what we've been discussing on the renderings. But again, I get your point. You're asking, is there a better way to, to incorporate this staircase in a, in a less, reduce the, the visibility of the, the mass retaining wall in the front? That's really what you're
Yeah. I mean, I'm not architect by any stretch, but I'm just thinking about other staircases of other buildings in the area.
We can explore some options.
And Jennifer, could you just repeat what you said about, I was trying to follow the, you said at council, the building, what was pulled back or moved forward?
So I can have Mr. Curley go into it more, but the building was, they were originally a little further back from the street, which had a, lent itself to a different streetscaping there. The council had requested that the building be pushed towards the street so that it would create more spacing between the back of the building and the existing building. So I'll have Mr. Curley address that. But my understanding is the building was slid forward closer to the right of way so that there'd be more space between the existing building and the proposed building.
Thank you.
And we'll have, we'll have both Mr. Curley and Mr. Lef address the, the staircase design. Well, Mr. Curley, address how the layout is, and then Mr. Lef, some of the design.
Any, any other planning board members have any other questions of the witness? Do our professionals have any other questions of the witness? That their reports have been answered their concerns? Okay. Does anybody in the public have any questions of the witness? Please stand up to the microphone if you don't mind.
Do I have to turn it on?
It's actually on.
I'll speak loud.
Okay, good.
Okay, I had five, five points. I don't think any are too long.
Please state your name and address.
Okay. Darren Melberger. My wife and I live at Miramar.
Okay.
We're on the first floor.
Thank you.
Of the, facing north. So we're right up against the building, you're at the new building. So we heard just now that maybe the back alleyway behind the north building's a little bit wider than it was previously. Is that what I heard or did I misinterpret that?
I, I will have our site civil engineer go into the exact dimensions, but, but yes.
Okay, great. Could, could you open up sheet three, I guess? So that's the area there where your cursor is, right? So maybe three's not the best one. Maybe 27?
You're in the Miramar, right?
That's the Miramar, yeah. So, so I guess, so you said that the summer, summer shading didn't affect, there's no shade from the summer on Miramar, right? Is that what you said?
Well, if, if, I'm sorry, if you're on the first floor and you're facing north, are you wrapping the corner and facing Webb or are you?
We're, we're right there, right where your cursor is.
So what it said was your building is to the south of the proposed building.
Right.
So the sun is never going to cast a shadow
Right.
on top of you because
Got it. But in the winter, is the same? Because it, is it winter, there's a little shading or no?
When we're talking about shadows, there's
Shadows.
Winter even less so. And again, you're south, so there's no impact with
Okay. So the, the new, the new residents will get, they'll have, they'll have shading or, or shadow?
Yes, on our building, Miramar.
And then I was wondering about the facade, the south facade of that building, of your building. It, if, I think it has balconies on it of the north building. I can't tell for sure, but I think it does. Makes sense that it would. We would ask if you considered maybe not balconies there against our building, if that's possible. That's one thing we're asking. We don't want to like look out and see people on a balcony from our window.
I don't know if that's a comment than a question.
Yeah. We can understand a window, we're going to be face to face with a window, new window, but a balcony, I don't know that we would prefer to have people out on a balcony making noise, sitting outside. I'd rather have them inside. That's just something to consider.
So that would be, that would be on all four floors?
On what?
That would be on all four floors.
Right. Up all four.
Then, and that would impact how many balconies? That would be eight balconies? I'm just
Mr. Melia, how many
Just trying to get an idea of what the numbers are.
There's two balconies on this facade.
Okay, so that's eight.
Three residential floors. So there's six total balconies.
Six balconies. And, okay. And that's facing the Miramar.
Correct.
Okay.
Just to consider. Thank you. And then the last, one of the last things is the stairwell there. Is that an emergency stairwell? Is that to be used? Is that a daily use stair, stairwell?
It's an emergency egress stairwell because it doesn't exist on the parking plan below. So in the event of a fire, they will exit here, but it's not for
That's great. Thank you for that. And the flood plain came up. What is the garage floor of the north building that all they should about?
I could have Mr. Curley address that, if that's better.
Yep.
We'll have our site civil engineer.
Four.
Our site civil engineer can give you an answer to that. We'll have that testimony.
Because our understanding that the flood plain is about
Now you testify. The, the question can be answered by the engineer.
Okay, sorry.
Actually, can I ask just something else? It's an interesting point that the gentleman brought up, having to do with that exit stairway. Can you, we didn't really deal with it at all. Are there, are there windows on that stairway? Going up and down that stairway? On any of the stairways? Are there windows facing out? Any of, any of them?
You talking about from the proposed building?
Yes, from the proposed building. Are there windows?
Yes.
All right. And so, okay.
Right here.
All right. So there will be windows here.
That, that's a window on the unit. I think the chairperson is asking about windows on the stairwell itself.
Stairwells.
Like the vertical stairwell.
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Yeah, I think, I think where you're going is you're asking the question if there will be lights in the stairwell that will shine out windows.
You know what I normally ask? Yes, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Windows in the stairwell, I understand.
There are. Are there, there are not?
There are.
There are.
Okay. All right. If you notice, there's some buildings around here. When you go at night, it's not pleasant when you're looking at those windows and you see the lights in the stairwell. We did not catch that in prior buildings. We have been asking that now. So we're looking for things that are downlit and so that you cannot see a straight line when you're sitting outside, a straight line of windows and a straight line of lights. That's uncharacteristic for the building.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I meant, like there. Okay, so if that's, if those are the stairwells, what's going to prevent three lights from shining out onto the street?
Usually those, these egress stairwells, we can have the lights on a timer. I'm sorry, not on a timer, on a motion detector, so that they're only activated when someone goes into the stairwell.
So that's, that's, you will or as opposed to usually? You will make that change?
We will make that change.
Okay.
It's, it's also energy efficient.
No, 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 I'm, I'm with you. I'm, I'm just, I just see it around town and it's, it's not attractive.
Also, and Adrian, please, if I'm interpreting this incorrectly, the stairwell is an enclosed space. It's got a door on the interior and then you go down the stairs and you can go out the door. So there's only a light within, so that motion light, if it's a motion light, is inside that stairwell. The hallway light does not shine into that space.
These stairs are, these doors
There's a door there.
And the stairs are typically solid.
Good, good, okay. So it's not like, in some of the other buildings where we've had, the hallway lights are a lot and they're always on. And that's what's, that common space that's over illuminated. This is not that.
So, okay. So as we keep these discussions going, is there someone else that can speak to the, I know that we spoke, so said that Mr. Curley would be dealing with the distance between the buildings?
Correct.
With that, we also need to understand the distance with the, with the balconies and to see how well that flows.
Mr. Curley, prepare to speak to that, yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Did I say anything that we need someone else to come up? I did open it up again, so here we are to public comment, public question. I'm sorry, I did that. Dan?
Okay. I speak softly, so I don't know if you can hear me.
Okay, we got it in here.
We need
Name and address, please.
I'm Sharon Agonaldo and I live at the Miramar. And I'm actually right above Darren and Helen in 2B. So we're right there where that building is going to have the back and that's our main living room and bedroom. So I don't, I don't speak technical like you folks, but I'm going to try to explain it the best I can. Right now, we have dirt around Right now, we have dirt around the, the whole building that you're planning on building, those two structures. And it floods over by us. It floods on Deal Lake. It floods on Kingsley. And we've had flooding on Webb. And we just had some of that, I guess, last year. So, my question is, those vents that you have for your parking, are they high enough up off the ground? Because my question would be, if water did get into your, into the, where the cars are gonna be parked, would you be draining it somewhere like in the back of the building, which would be facing the Miramar? And then we have nowhere for it to go except to flood in our building, so...
Our next witness, Mr. Curley, is going to speak specifically to flooding, flood hazard, and also stormwater, and can address that question.
Okay.
Would you all, you want to answer?
No, we're gonna cover, we're gonna cover stormwater management heavily, I'm sure. Are we all set? Anybody else? Okay.
All right. And we'd like to call up our next witness, Bob Curley, who's our civil engineer, who can start to get into the questions about site layout, and also stormwater and flood hazard.
Okay. All right, I'd like to propose a five-minute recess.
Someone?
Second? Fall in favor?
Hi. Okay. Five minutes, literally five minutes.
Okay. And we will be returning to the meeting now. I will, okay, I will take roll call now. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Still here.
Mayor Morris absent. Jen Souter.
Here.
Mayor Shenmales absent. Bob Zuckerman absent. Kathy McGlone.
Here.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
Chairman Kerzak.
Here.
Okay.
All right, so for our second witness this evening, we have Mr. Curley, who's our site civil engineer. So I would ask Mr. Curley to be sworn in, and then I'll ask just my first question.
I solemn swear, affirm, testimony that I've given this magnitude, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name for the record, spell it.
Robert Curley, C-U-R-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. Curley, we're going to be offering you as an expert in the field of civil engineering, so can you please provide your background, educational, and experience in the field?
If I may, pardon the interruption.
Go ahead.
Mr. Curley's been before us...
Numerous times.
Forever. Your license still current?
Yes, it is.
Understanding? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Curley, you've heard the presentation, some of the questions, so I will let you begin, and talk about the layout here, and as you testify, if you could also make sure you touch on stormwater and flood hazard.
So, if I may, just for the, for the board's understanding, when we submitted our initial application and subsequent resubmission, there were a number of comments that came out of both the board professionals. So what I did was, I was able to get, get this exhibit, which is the layout plan, updated, I'm sorry, updated, to answer a couple of the questions, so that the board, so that it could be a little more clear. And I did have one error on my, on my plans when I originally submitted, and that had to do with the parking count around the, around the building. But first, what I'd like to do is just explain this exhibit, this is...
Mark this as A3.
This is sheet three, the 14th of the set. And there was questions as far as location of the building, and what we, what we were able to do based upon some of the comments that we received from the city. And one of the first things that we did was we relocated Building A or the north building as close to the front property line as we possibly could on Deal Lake Drive. And what that, what that did was, that allowed us to have a larger separation distance between our proposed building and the Miramar.
What are those distances?
Well, let me, and let me just, and we likewise relocated Building B closer to Eighth Avenue to again provide a higher separation distance. So for the north building, the, the exhibit that I'm showing here shows that the, the projection of the balconies are two feet out beyond the edge of the building. But the closest distance from the edge of the balcony to the Miramar is 17.74 feet. To the building, you get an extra two feet, so it's almost, almost 20 feet, so it'd be 19.74 feet. And that's, that's the closest point to the Miramar, to our proposed balconies. On the southerly building, again, we, we have the same projection of a two-foot balcony, and the separation distance between the two buildings, the Kingsley Orms and our building that we have designated as Building B, is 18.89 feet. Or building to building, add another two feet, so it would be 20.89 feet, or just about 21 feet.
Are there any, are there any balconies on that side?
Yes, there's, there's a single balcony.
There's one on each floor?
Yes.
Okay, and can you, can you repeat those dist, distances again, please? I'm now, I'm there, right there.
So it's, from the balcony to the Kingsley Orms?
Yeah.
Is 18.89 feet.
And then, the balcony is, how far out? Is that another two feet?
Two feet. So building to building is 20.89 feet.
And what is the required building setback there?
Zero.
Sorry?
The required building setback under zoning, I asked, and Mr. Curley responded, it's zero. Okay. You can continue.
I just wanted, do you want me to repeat the distance?
No, I got it, thank you.
So, then, again, with this exhibit, I added some additional dimensions, just again to, for clarity for the board members. From our easterly facade to the rear of the Kingsley Orms is, shown here is 33.82 feet. And the distance from the Miramar to the westerly facing facade of Building B, and this is to, to the projection of the balcony, is 44.07 feet. So building to building would be 46.07. Again, from a location standpoint, on the, on the northerly portion of Building A, our, our proposed retaining wall is basically, is pretty much on the property line. There may be like, an inch or two, but it's, we're proposing our, our retaining wall to be pretty much right on the property line, on Deal Lake Drive. Now, that, that doesn't, that doesn't include the open air, open area between where the proposed curb line is and, and the, our, our proposed retaining walls. So that is an additional four or five feet separation distance. Another question that had come up, had to do with the, the vertical location of where the building is. And this gets into the existing elevations of the roadways, and maybe if I switch to...
This is your submitted site plan, which I guess we can go ahead and mark as A4, correct?
That's correct.
And how many sheets are in this? Just for the record.
14.
Was that, was that prior one, that was the single slide put in? Did we mark that one?
That was eight.
Was sheet three?
And we marked it as A3.
It is the updated sheet three that I supplied after we received the comments from the board's professionals.
And we've marked it as A3.
And that's part of the site plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's sheet three of the, I get it. Thank you.
So, some of the comments from the surrounding neighbors were, what were the elevations of the building, and how does it comply with flood hazard? So on Deal Lake Drive, the elevation, the existing elevation on Deal Lake Drive is somewhere around 7, 7.3. The flood, Hundred Year Flood elevation of Deal Lake is elevation 10. So we're required to provide a one-foot separation distance between the Hundred Year Flood elevation and elevation 10 to our garage floor. And our garage floor for Building A is at 11.25. So that's how we came up with the grading that, that set up the rest of the driveway and, and our ability to grade the site and provide compliance with the flood hazard regulations. So, from a circulation standpoint, again, this is the, this is the grading plan, but a vehicle coming into the site, would come down Deal Lake Drive, and then turn into the driveway between our proposed Building A and the Kingsley Orms. And then if they wanted to go to proposed Building B, they would continue on, drive through the parking field, and then turn, oops, and then turn into Building B. So one of the changes that we, we were able to achieve, and, and this was, this was based upon some of the review comments that we received from the board's professionals, was the, the fact that there was no loading area. So when we, when we did the modification to our parking layout within each building, we had, we had 45 total parking stalls within each building, excuse me. One was designated as a loading area in the building itself. So we felt that that wouldn't serve a useful purpose for anyone trying to make a delivery into the building, because then they would need access into the garage. So instead of providing that loading area within the building, we are now going to designate these two parking stalls outside of each building that are on the drive aisle as loading areas. So that, what that, what that does is, it allows for a delivery person that needs to get into the, needs to get into the building to deliver packages, a spot where they can park their vehicle, and then access the building, and/or for garbage pickup, they can also have the garbage truck park, park in both of these areas, and allow for the maintenance person to bring the garbage into the truck.
So with that modification, how many parking spaces are being proposed, both inside and outside?
So when you add all of the parking stalls together, and this is before, before we dedicate these two loading zones, there's 113 parking stalls being provided.
And that's more than we had initially set out in the application, right? We originally had 109?
That, that's correct.
Is it 113, correct?
No, no, those are just straight, those are straight parking stalls. Now, when we, when we detract or take away two stalls for the loading area, we end up with 111 parking stalls.
Can we, if you don't mind, can we just say how many are in each building?
Yes.
And then, how many extra there are beyond what's inside?
There's 45 stalls in each building.
All right, so there are 45 interior stalls. And then on exterior?
There will be 21 stalls plus two loading areas. But we're not gonna count the loading areas.
So that equals 111 parking spaces and two loading areas, correct?
That's correct.
And does that exceed what's required under the waterfront redevelopment plan?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so...
The requirement for parking within waterfront redevelopment plan is two parking stalls per unit.
For this lot, which is different than many of the other lots we've been here. This particular lot under the waterfront redevelopment plan has a requirement for two per unit, correct?
That's correct. So that would be 108 stalls.
Okay.
So now, let's get down to the, let's get down to the question that I know you want to ask me. How about street parking? What are we talking about?
I, I do, I do. But, let's, let's, let's just go with the 45 first, all right? 45 are on the interior, and you're saying that there are 27 units in each building? Or am I wrong?
That's correct.
27 in each building. So that means you need 54 in each building. But you're providing 45, so last in gets to park outside. I mean, once you assign those 45, the rest of them park outside.
All the parking stalls will be assigned.
And some residents will be assigned an outdoor space.
Right, whoever's last in, or whatever the cost is, or whatever it is, they end up outside. Okay, so it's 111. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, again, I think I mentioned when I, when I first, my site plan, that package that originally got submitted, I had an error on my parking count. And the review from CCH, Donna, done accurately indicated the quantity of stalls that are on the street in this time, and the quantity of stalls that'll be proposed on the street. So the existing stalls that are on the street today are 40 stalls that surround, that surround the development.
Now, when you're saying surround the development, are you...
All four roads.
All right, all four roads total, okay. Today.
Today.
There are 40 stalls, okay.
And when we're done, there will be 37. So the net difference then, if we've provided 111 parking stalls, minus the three stalls that we're using on the street, gets us to 108.
No, you gotta say that differently.
We have 111 parking stalls being provided.
Let's, let's start at the beginning. So it's 27 dwelling units that require two spaces per, so that's 54 per building?
Right.
And, pardon my, so that's, 108 are required by the residential component. And then your on-street, your, is deficient three spaces. Are the three spaces that we lose on-street a result of creating new driveways? Or is it just reallocation of the curb line to accommodate the way the spaces should be? Like on Webb, on Webb, I think we...
I believe it's a combination, but I, in particular on the eighth, to, to have separation distance between the entrance and the parking stalls, that, that takes away the number of stalls, I, so...
To Donna's point, on Webb Street, this development's doing nothing on Webb Street.
That's correct.
But we're losing three stalls on Webb Street, just because, what if we build a place as a master developer, has to do everything, and it's gonna get redrawn.
Hold on a second, because the way this is drawn, I think these are more than 25 feet from the crosswalk to this first stall, which isn't how it's supposed to be, so you can pick up spaces there, unless it just looks that way, and it's not how it's measured? I don't know.
So my point is only that, in the plan, we say that if you take away on-street parking because you're creating new driveway openings, you have to compensate for that parking on site. So just because we have a loss of three spaces, I don't know that the developer has to compensate those three spaces on site if it's not attributed to his creating new driveways. So I'm at 108 spaces, and he's got 111. So he's got three extra spaces, but I don't want to say he's obligated to provide them for public parking. for public parking under the plan unless it's because he's got, you know, if it's because of what's happening on 8th with the rearrangement to accommodate that new curb cut.
Well, even in other situations, it's never been to accommodate public parking, it's just the overall increase on-site. But here we do have 108 spaces plus three extra, and that's before we even take into account the EV credit that Mr. Curly will get into next. So I think, no matter how you slice it, it complies.
I think what the board is going to be concerned about, though, is if the lost public parking needs to be accommodated on-site.
I can't imagine how that's even possible.
But that's, that's not part of the redevelopment.
No, that's, that's what it says.
No, it indicates that if you take parking away from the street, then you have to provide the equal number of stalls on-site. It doesn't say anything about public parking on-site.
Well, who would be using those stalls then?
It's, it's the requirement for a guest possibly that would be coming to the site.
Let's...
Whereby, whereby a guest would be normally parking on the street. So we're taking away street parking, we're providing it on-site. And that's how the redevelopment plan is very...
You guys, I don't read the plan very often.
Well, I mean, he makes a very interesting point. I make an assumption that they would be public parking spaces because they're on-street spaces, that's the public.
Well, the bottom line is, is that we're losing three spaces.
I was trying to offer them, you know, the gift of, I don't know that he's necessarily obligated to, because they're not because of his driveways.
But, but in addition, let's, if we're going to, again, trying to be conservative, I wanted to make sure that the board understood that we will be compliant. If you take in the EV credit, which you're allowed...
Do fancy math.
No, no.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's the law.
I know it's the law, I know it's the law, I don't believe in it, but I know it's the law.
You're allowed a maximum credit of 10% of the total required parking, or 10.8, because we need 108, or 10.8 stalls. So that's over and above the 111 stalls that we're providing.
Understood, so the people that are living there have more than enough parking? That's what you're really saying? But if, if we are looking at taking this credit, let's say, I don't know if this, if you are or not, want to take the EV credit, those, my request will be that those EV spaces are real and they're ready. They're ready to go. They are not...
I mean, that's governed by the statute too, but...
I'm asking for that, and as I always do.
Okay, if I may.
Sure.
So the requirement that we're mandatory, mandatory obligated to is 17 EV stalls. What we're going to provide, right up front, plug-in ready, nine stalls per building. So that'd be a total of 18.
Okay.
However, I just want, I want the board to understand, we are wiring the entire building so that every stall can be made EV ready.
Okay.
Mr. Curly, when you calculated the number of existing parking spaces on the perimeter of this particular lot, you said there was 40, right?
Correct.
Are those lots, I'm sorry, the parking spaces actually striped for parking, or are the ones on Web Street just... So is it, is it possible that if you strike those on Web Street, you would have less than 40?
So the, I've, the proposed parking layout is compliant with Title 39.
Okay.
But, but to your point, are they striped all correctly? I'm going to, I'm going to say no, they're not.
Okay, so that if they were 20-foot stalls on Web Street, instead of having 16, you may have 14 or whatever?
I believe, I believe one would be lost on Web, due to the striping the way it's dimensioned today. There's one stall that is short. I think you're right, I think it's about 16.
So even though you counted 40, it may actually be less than that if they were compliant?
Correct, and again, I wanted to be conservative because I know the board is sensitive to the parking that surrounds, surrounds the development.
All right, so in the end, we're still short three around the building. Started with 40, we end, we have 37. That's the bottom. Right, internally, you're, you're good. You have what you're...
But on-site, we have the 108 required by the building plus the three.
That's right.
Right. And just for the record, the reference is actually in the amendment to the redevelopment plan, the First Amendment. It just says that the creation, relocation, or expansion of a curb cut shall be permitted provided the net number of on-street parking spaces that are removed shall be provided on the property and shall be in addition to the number of parking spaces otherwise required by the plan to be provided on the property. It doesn't specify that they have to be open to the public. And so here we have the 108 spaces plus the three.
I get it, you're right. You know.
Oh, I just, I've sat here going through to make sure I understood that.
Right, right.
Okay, so parking...
Just one more question about on-street parking. I assume this is a master developer thing, not part of this actual site plan?
The master developer is responsible under the subsequent developer agreement to do all of the streetscaping, which is from the curbing out and involves the restriping of the parking.
All I'm going to ask is like, you know, they coordinate with James, because it seems like we could squeeze some more parking spaces in there.
We had, we had, but I enroll now if they changed it from what I originally approved or not.
I would say whatever plans the master developer submitted to you are the controlling plans.
I don't have any plans.
Okay. So when the, when it's time to do this portion, whatever plans are submitted, those are the controlling plans for the on-street parking. Okay.
So then, one of the other items that was requested to have some testimony provided were, oops, were the heights of the retaining walls that surround, that are proposed around the building. So on the, on the 8th Avenue side, we're keeping the retaining wall. It's between 24 and 30 inches, but that, that's, that's a maximum. And again, the idea was to provide an area with a retaining wall, the cap, so that if someone did want to sit on the retaining wall or have it as a bench, they could do that, and not to provide something that was too tall and overpowering. So the other, the other concern that we always have with retaining walls is if they do exceed 30 inches, then technically you're required fall protection, and that's another reason why we kept all the retaining walls that are adjacent to the right-of-way, between 24 and 30 inches.
And why are the retaining walls needed in the first place?
Again, what we're trying to do is provide some additional coverage to the foundation instead of having a large foundation exposed immediately adjacent to the right-of-way. We were filling in with, again, some planted areas and provide an area that we could have a planting bed and provide some landscaping, buffering the adjacent sidewalk.
And why would there be so much exposed foundation? What's that caused by?
Again, the flood hazard elevation dictated the location of our finished floors. So that's, that's really what set up the grading for the entire site.
Maybe if you can continue to talk about stormwater along those lines and how we're meeting...
Can we go back to the flood thing? So are the, are there going to need to be hot vents in that elevation?
There was a question before of kind of what, what happens when it floods and would we be discharging water onto the adjoining properties? If you could talk a little bit about kind of how...
So, so again, the elevation that exists on Deal Lake Drive is right around, let's just say it's eight, it's very close, it's seven and a half to eight. The flood elevation is elevation 10. So again, that's what, that's what forced us into setting our finished floor for the garage at 11.25. Adding, adding to that, floor-to-floor elevation sets the finished floor of the building. So that's, that's pretty much how we got to grading, the overall grading of the site. The concern of, will this development shed water onto the adjacent properties? And that's, that's not the case at all. And in fact, we have, we have all of our stormwaters being collected and routed into, and routed into a subsurface detention facility. And again, all of the stormwaters routed into this detention facility with a discharge that ties into the drainage on Deal Lake Drive.
And is that an improvement over the existing dirt condition on the lot?
That's correct. Currently, the lot has zero stormwater management detention, and it's compacted soil, which has been used as a, as a yard for multiple uses for the city and also for the redevelopment for storing pipe materials. And there's, I, there's a couple of vaults that have been stored there also.
Okay, Bob, just to touch on, not to touch on, the over vents, the question that came out was the movers for the parking deck, that's not an effective trade.
That's correct. Those movers are at, at elevation, they would be probably starting at 11 and a half and working up. So they would be above the floor of the garage.
So historically, I know the image is showing, like you just said, it's going to be used for staging area and storage. I don't think that, well, you're able to start to say, I don't think we can touch any greater than 400 anyway, but as a concession for the board, I think they would like to see, I'll speak for the board, but I think that, so some type of breathing infrastructure for all of you, I think would go in addition to the board, because like April, it's very into concern.
So we will be complying with the DEP's requirement for our caper permit.
I understand.
And we will, we will provide at least two, if not three, filter.
So what that is, is the main factor to do the best for the collection, and that's a good, that's a good compromise. The collect, the tree curb stop is like...
That's correct.
So it'll be where a collection comes in, in the parking lot, collection stormwater from the parking lot, goes into the catch basin, a portion, it's almost like a group, a portion of the catch basin is then not going to be for quantity, but kept in that, filters through the strata, the root system. I do think that it's nice compromise, like Bob said, it's not necessary for DEP purposes, but for the board's, yeah, executives. They're going just to, I'd like to touch on, but you would do a gradual recharge, also not a requirement, however, they are having wrapped stone perforated pipe, it will offer some level of recharge even though it's not required in this business.
Moving from stormwater, I think we're up to utility meters and transformers.
So again, with the resubmission, and this is again, based upon comments received from the board's professionals, I updated, again, this, I'm going back to the dimension plan of 3 or 14, where we clearly identified the location of the electric meters and the gas meter on Building B, located interior to the site. And then on Building A, it's along the wall that's immediately adjacent to the handicap stall. And the transformers, those were located on the plans previously, but they're still in the same spot. They're located at the corner of the building, Building B, and in the parking, adjacent to the parking for Building A.
And if we could touch upon lighting? We, we've already heard about the building mounting lighting, but if you could just talk about the interior site lighting and just verify, as brought up in the engineering report, that the illumination levels are compliant?
So again, this is based upon comments we received by the board's professionals. Our lighting plan that we indicated, or that was part of the overall set, included the site lighting that's being proposed around the perimeter of the project. So what was asked in one of the reviews was to just indicate the site lighting that's being proposed within our development, not, not around the entire perimeter.
So not including the, the street lighting?
That's correct.
And we'll, I'll just pause, we'll mark this A5. This is the updated lighting sheet, correct?
Yes. In addition to that, what we were able to do is we were able to put cutoff shields to prevent light spillage onto the adjacent properties. There is one, there is one light that I still have on the plan that still sheds just a little bit of light, and that's over, over in this area. This is, I, I can get this fixed with a, with a larger cutoff shield, it'll probably have to be a custom cutoff shield for this, but I, I can get that fixed, and that, that'll be modified.
So as a condition of approval, we'll be able to show compliance in that location, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there's five pole-mounted lights in the parking lot and seven wall-mounted. All of the lights are at, are the dimension from the ground to the luminaire is 13 feet.
I'm sorry, how much?
13.
13.
That's the mounting height. The pole, pole-mounted lights are located around the perimeter of the parking area. And then the wall-mounted lights are on the corner of the buildings and then on these, these basots.
Can we talk about the lighting that, and may, it may not be lighting that comes off of a fixture, but lighting that might come off of a car? Like the exit, I guess that where the driveway is on both buildings? We could just go to either one, doesn't really matter, we start with one.
So in this, in this exit?
Yes.
Or this garage area?
Yes.
Where we would be exiting in?
Yeah.
This is a blank wall?
That's a blank wall?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no windows at all on this? And then on Building A, we would be turning in, but if a vehicle were exiting?
Yes.
Right now, we show a fence that I would extend down to the far side of the garage entrance.
And that's your fence?
Yes.
Okay, so we want to extend that fence?
Yes.
To be over probably, what, five feet, what is it, five feet, six feet right now?
It's, right now, it's proposed at four feet.
Well, four feet so that the lights don't go into...
Correct.
That building.
So I'll extend the fence, it'll probably move down at least another 25 feet to the north.
And then can you talk about the lighting in those, the alleyways between the new buildings and the existing buildings? Are those alleyways open? People walk through them or are they fenced up? And if they're not fenced up, how do they lit?
So in this, in this area, the only lighting that we have is the lighting above the door, and that's, that's a mandatory requirement. We do show the lights that are shown on the balconies, but those are really ornamental and they don't have any light value that ultimately gets down to the, gets down to the ground. So the short answer is, they are not shown as illuminated now, you could put some bollard lighting there. There is an existing fence that's along the property line now, that's probably going to be maintained.
But on your property, those walkways are open to the public?
That's correct.
Oh, one more item about that fence that we were talking about. Is there anything that, that, I'm guessing it's a new fence, that, that you're putting in there? Is that blocking anyone, anyone's bedroom?
In, for the driveway exit, no.
No, no, the, that fence that we're putting in, because I don't know how high the first windows are, residential windows are, out of that building. I just don't know.
I'm not... I'm sure, I, I'm not 100% certain that there's a resident at this northwest corner.
Well, it's that and all the way down also, because your, the fence is extending all the way, right?
So.
I just want to understand.
Again, I'm, I'm not, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to tell the board that it's not a residential unit. I don't believe it is. I believe that this is all mechanical across the back of the building and I believe this may be an office. But I, again, I, I don't want to say it.
But we do, we do have a photo exhibit that our planner will show that shows actual pictures of those buildings, so you can get a sense of what, what the first story looks like there.
Yeah, I'd like to just to see that we're not suddenly putting up a fence that's higher than it needs to be and, and suddenly a window's not available. I, I don't want to do that, but I also don't want to have anyone coming down to that garage where the lights are going right into someone's home. We can't have that. So I just don't know how, what the height of that is, of those windows are on that, on that building. So I'm concerned about.
Well, we could show, we could have our planner show the pictures.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Farmer.
Yeah.
This?
Yeah, is that what it is?
It's a few feet off, off the ground.
So it's like two feet off the ground?
Uh, two or three.
Two or three.
Is that a residence?
I don't think it's a residence, but I have no idea. They're already staring at the fence anyway.
Yeah, there's a fence over there anyway.
Yeah, okay.
If we could have our, I'd like to make sure everyone's looking at the same thing. So we'll, we'll have our planner show what are our pictures we do have.
All right.
Mr. Curley, I don't think I have anything else for you. I just went through my list.
No, I'm pretty sure I touched on, I touched on everything.
I had one thing about the accessible route for the, those accessible spaces on the backs of the building. How are, how is that working?
For a pedestrian that would be parking in this handicap stall, come up the sidewalk and then into the garage through here and then access the elevator through the garage. Obviously, we don't want a handicapped person to have to go out into the drive aisle to be able to get into the garage. And the same, similar situation for this handicap stall, we, pedestrians or someone who's in a wheelchair possibly would utilize the sidewalk and then come into the garage, oops, excuse me.
Whoops.
Come into the garage through the store.
So.
And then access the elevator.
So it seems like a long way to go. And it seems like there should be a, be able to be a way to align a crosswalk for the two walkways with the access area for the accessible space. If we make those parking spaces closer to the doors and that walkway, we can probably kill a couple of problem birds. I don't know that you necessarily, you might lose one space in the total count, but I, I think there's a strong benefit there.
So the, the thought would be to take the handicap stall and move it directly adjacent to?
Well, I think that's where the access lane would be and the stall would be next to it, so that you could have a clear path, whether pedestrian or mobility person.
We can do that.
Go straight across to the other side and, and also.
And Don, you want a crosswalk between those two?
Yeah.
Crosswalk, you might want to do, but you're going to lose a space, right?
I think you lose one space.
If I'm putting a crosswalk in, yes. I, I would lose two probably.
You're going to lose two spaces.
Yeah, so the preference would be to not put the crosswalk in.
Well, you're going to pick up the space at the other end, right? I think you only need one or two.
Again, the intent would be, now there's, the intent would be to provide access to a handicap pedestrian and or wheelchair closest to the sidewalk, which, which we can do. We can accommodate that and still not lose, not lose a parking stall. But to have a, a, a crosswalk across the, that would definitely.
You're shifting that one to the other?
No, I can, you know what? I think we can probably do that. We would extend the striping from the handicap portion across the drive-by. We can do that.
Right, so east and west?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And then with that, I just want to go back to this thing of the illumination between the buildings. It looks very dark where now a handicapped person is supposed to be rolling up and rolling into the garage. Obviously, we don't want too much lighting there because there's adjacent buildings, but it seems like some sort of ground level lighting.
We, we can put some bollard lighting.
And that would be for both buildings?
Yes.
And then I had the question about, so you're, so this drive aisle is going to be loading and garbage pickup, so, so you need a truck access through that little chicane. So, all right, I, I had wanted that striping to be planted, but I, I think that's going to get killed.
No, you need, you're going to have to.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask one, my, one more, the annoying question I always ask. The master developer will do the full block by the time this is done?
The master, the full block, yes.
I believe that there was a request at one point for wheel stops? Wheel stops?
The stops have been added inside of the parking garage.
Is that all, we only want it on the inside?
Is it in the curb on the outside? We want for the curb.
Is there a curb on the outside so that?
Yes, it's the whole part.
So they can't, you can't go over that?
Correct.
All right, so all the wheel stops are inside? Okay.
Speaking of curving, Mr. Curley, and I'm a little bit fuzzy on this, but as I recall from either a report or a detail, the curb is two foot, then with a batter section, six inches at the top, and where it starts its batter, it's a eight foot, I'm sorry, eight inch cross section, correct?
I'm.
And you're curving in cross section. It's two foot high to a batter. We go from eight inches to six at the top of the curb?
The curb dimensions are, would be 18 inches if we're going to be doing concrete curving.
Okay.
So it'd be 18 inches tall, six on the top, eight on the bottom.
Okay. And somewhere along the line, there was a discrepancy that potentially using Belgium block.
Built to block.
Okay. And then somewhere else on the plan or other reports, I, at, at the curb cuts, it's going to be eight inches rather than?
So no matter what, we're, if, if there's a handicap ramp and which is, which I'm going to be needing for these particular, now that I've modified this, that will be poured concrete. You can't have Belgium block abut sidewalk. It just, it, it.
Doesn't work.
It never works. And it's always going to crack. There's always going to be an issue. So if, if I have sidewalk immediately budding curving, it's going to be poured concrete.
All I'm saying is somewhere along the line, the plans, there seem to be a discrepancy.
Yes, there is. I, I just, I will get it clarified.
Okay.
I just have a question back to the retaining wall, just to clarify. In the render, so you're saying 24 inches to 30 inches everywhere, even on the web?
Correct.
Okay. Because in the renderings, it shows taller. I mean, just about visually, but that's just by a drawing.
I'm not including the, the retaining wall that, that is needed for stair access. That's, that was.
No, no, I mean along web, like at the, on the west side of the property, just the re, that's a different set of renderings, but the, it just shows with the, with the benches and the cutouts, but the retaining wall is going higher than in the drawing is going.
In the architectural?
In the rendering of the architectural drawing. So I'm just clarifying that they're all.
It, it will be maximum of 30 inches.
Okay.
Mr. Curley, I just wanted to make sure we address a few items from the engineering report dated March 19. One, this is number seven under grading. There was a recommendation that retaining walls along the right-of-way be set back at least one foot to ensure no encroachment. We, that can't be done, right? The, the retaining walls are where they've been proposed, correct?
Correct.
And they, they can't be moved?
At the back, at the back of the proposed sidewalk.
Okay. So that.
The sidewalk would abut the, the proposed retaining.
And there's not room to move everything back without reducing the distances between the proposed and existing buildings, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Which was a condition of the council's approval to come here. Just on the lighting, to summarize those comments, Mr. Amelia indicated we were changing out the lights that go on the buildings, that they would be dark sky compliant. And you have testified, I believe, that the lighting plan, once you essentially turn off or don't include the lighting from the streetlights, that, that will be made to comply. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that'll comply with the minimum levels and the average levels as well?
Yes, she will comply.
Okay. Staging, number 40 in the comments. Attached to the subsequent developer agreement, there was a staging plan that was a requirement of the council approval. If you'd like, we can pull it up, but it was approved by the council and we are required to comply with it. And it governs when sidewalks can be open or closed and, and the staging on site of which building gets built first and then second.
Do we have that?
That is attached to the subsequent developer agreement. We can pull it up and label it as exhibit six.
You could, I just don't know where, I haven't seen that.
I don't think it was in the application package. I had to get it myself.
Okay.
This is the construction mitigation prep plan? Is that what this is?
This is the construction logistics plan, which was attached to the subsequent developer agreement.
Okay.
And so this was, council approved this as part of the subsequent developer process. I will mark this, let's see, I think we're up to exhibit A6. So we are, the applicant will be required to comply with this construction plan that shows when sidewalks will be open and closed, et cetera, and the phasing of the buildings. Going into just a few more.
You just leave us up to one second.
Sure.
So this is enforced by construction?
No, it's enforced by me and they have to pay for the parking, but I have to chase them down most of the time.
I just, yeah, I just mean in terms of like if it says from April or whatever.
Yeah, no, I have to catch them.
Yeah. That's all, I mean, a lot of construction going on in the city right now.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's everything. I will note, I should have asked Mr. Amelia this, but I'll confirm. Number 51 in the engineering report noted that there was a door missing to one of the units. Yeah, the, the label will be added. They're, all units have a door.
Actually, Bob, could you just talk about the, the erosion control? There was a condition of the, subsequent developer or the TRC about dust control.
So as part of compliance with soil erosion incentive control, there's mandatory dust control notes that have to be added to the plan. And that's part of, part of every, every construction site. Now, what's going to happen is the southern area is going to be used as a staging area for building A. But as soon as, as soon as construction is started, once the foundation on building A is done, there, there really won't be any site dust generated, other than, I mean, and if there is, the soil erosion incentive control notes clearly indicate that there is to be water, just to keep dust down. And that's compliant with the soil erosion incentive control standards.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Curley.
All right, so are we saying that we completed the, the AVACian report?
I believe we have.
You feel that you responded to everything?
I believe we've hit everything one way or another, but if you.
I got, I got something. I got something for you.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone can go.
I had a general question. So you talked about the movers and the landscaping. General question, should there be a distance if you're not going to do the plantable operating with your parking lot? Should there be a distance of your vegetation to those movers and just to the natural?
I, I don't want to answer that.
That's just, that's just a general question.
I mean, it sounds very logical.
And again, it's also something I don't know.
I mean, the landscape architect is going to say there's this distance the plant has to be from the building anyway.
Understood, but then again, like, I think again, so I don't know. So if there's something to be looked into, we should.
Well, once we get past the questions, our next person to testify will be our landscape architect.
I have a couple. When we're looking at the AVACian report, number two, it says that a current, number two says that a current letter of interpretation from LOI, an LOI from NJEDP should be, also be provided? You're asking for a waiver for that, is that? Why would, you need a waiver for that? Or, or is something that we're asking that's unreasonable?
The entire, the entire site is paved and there's no wetlands on the site.
Yeah, that might have been a Chris Applebaum.
Okay. All right. The other item that I'm concerned about is stormwater on page four, where we're saying that, um, hang on, let me see if that's where I'm looking at. No, no, no. Water quality, water quality. Where it says water quality on number five, it says, or actually on page five, on the top of the page, first paragraph, it says the applicant is not proposing an increase, but a decrease in motor vehicle surface. I have not seen a motor vehicle on that site.
So we had, we had kind of touched on that earlier and I tried to articulate it, maybe I didn't do enough.
Okay.
I touched on it again. So it's an increase of a quarter acre. So I do agree, if you look at the site, it was stockpile and storage.
But it's largely paved.
Right, yeah, so, Bob, yeah, Bob.
And that's, that's by definition, a motor vehicle surface.
So even though you don't, aren't at, because you're right, that we're, they're actually storing a lot of different things on that site for many years.
Yes, and I, I should clarify, for several years, it was leased to the city and the city had its beach operations there. So for beach maintenance and other DPW aspects were stored there. The majority, all of that is now moved off the site to another location in anticipation of this development.
All right, so the, so just to clarify that, that what they're really saying here is that even though there are no vehicles, it's just that there was asphalt there?
And open to precipitation, open to air.
Okay. All right, so it's not necessarily what was really there, it's just what was paved, that it was paved?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify, is if they increase a quarter acre, which they really, they can on the site, of motor vehicle space, so that concession that we talked about with the filter boxes was, it is a concession, it's something that they don't have to provide, but they're doing it.
Right, right. Which we appreciate, of course. You're also asking for a concession on the, the parking lot, so you need a design waiver for the parking stall widths, correct?
That's number 11.
That's number 11.
So number 11, just, just so we're clear, in the waterfront redevelopment plan, the water. So number 11, just, just so we're clear, in the waterfront redevelopment plan, the waterfront redevelopment plan supersedes the zoning code. The waterfront redevelopment plan requires full-size spaces to be nine by 18, and then allows compact spaces to be smaller, doesn't, doesn't specify the size, and you can have up to 35% of the spaces be compact spaces.
Okay.
What's referenced here is the, the actual zoning code itself.
So you do need a design waiver?
I would argue we do not need a design waiver from the underlying zoning code, because the waterfront redevelopment plan supersedes the underlying code.
Okay, so you feel that you don't need a design waiver, I'm going to need to have a discussion with our professionals if there really is a design waiver required, for number 11.
Mr. Curly, can you just specify the number-
Did you change that in a, I'm sorry, I'm still on the parking space size. Did you change that in one of the items?
All right, well, it's, all right, we're going to have to determine whether, when we're providing whatever approvals we provide, we have to state that we're going to do that, and if we are, we need to know that. I'm sure you guys can get back to us on that. Are you okay, Sam, with everything, everything where that had to be changed on the plans, where the light color temperature should be revised, the lighting levels should be revised? All that?
So, if you had, I think the shop dog should be submitted to the condition, I'm, I'm sure they'll say it and then I'll comply, the shop dog did show 3,000, apparently, but they testified that they'll be compliant, I'm sure that's a condition of approval, I'm sure it is.
And we also indicated that that fixture is going to be eliminated.
Right, right, right. And it was that fixture that was the issue?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I remember the fixtures being eliminated, okay. Garage door, we didn't talk about that, outside of that it was going to be metal. How about, we're in solid, how about the size of the garage door?
The size of the garage door? Don't know if you have that on yours.
It's in excess of nine feet, I, I don't have the exact dimension.
The garage door is wide enough for the two lanes of traffic, right? It's one single door.
So, um-
Sixteen feet, sixteen.
I, I know the redevelopment plan indicates it's supposed to be nine feet.
Right.
It's, it's in excess of that.
Because it's a two-way?
That's correct.
That's the reason?
That's correct.
And that allows for there to be a single garage door in each building, correct?
That's correct.
Anybody else have any, any concerns from the board? No? Questions from our professionals, that they're satisfied, that they've received everything that they, any modifications that they need? We're okay? All right. Any questions from the public to this witness?
Do I take that name again?
Yes, please.
And your address?
Yeah.
Darren Melburger, Murmo Building, 1B.
Thank you.
First floor. Uh, the, those lanes between the north building and Murmo and the Deal Lake apartment building and your building, is, are they fire lanes, or are they, or are the fires to be fought from the street and the back out of your driveway?
They are 18 feet width, I'll, I'll be honest with you, there's no way that anyone, if there was a fire in any of those buildings, whether it's our proposed buildings or the existing buildings, no one's going to bring a fire truck in there.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Curly, that makes sense, but I prefer that the fire department, like, these plans get reviewed by the fire department, so they'll, they'll figure that out as well. But thank you. The entrance into the parking garage from the south face that you were talking about with the handicap, is that the only way into the, can, can you change that configuration? Or is that the most preferred way to get in? I think you were worried about parking spots as a whole, so maybe if you were to change that entrance from the south face, put it on the east face, that would probably mess up your parking arrangement?
Is the question, how does a handicap person access the, access the building?
Yeah.
Well, we have shifted the, or we're proposing to shift the handicapped stalls to the proximity closest to the access walk that runs along the back of the building.
I understand. Does the access to the parking garage have to be from the south, south face of the building, or can it be from the east face?
Well, there's a driveway, the garage door opens, again, our, our intention for a handicapped pedestrian or someone who's in a wheelchair is not to have them have to go into the driveway.
Could, could I walk up to the screen on, would that be okay? Or should I stay here?
No, no, you do up.
Okay. I know, I understand where you have your, your entrance, it's here, for walk-in, right? Walk-in entrance, that's the only walk-in entrance, right?
Correct.
Could you put it here, or does that mess up your parking arrangement? Could you put it through there?
I think that's where the tandem spaces are.
It, it would definitely affect the interior parking regularly, yeah, this is on a, a dry line.
I think as, as owners of property here, we prefer if nobody walked through here, other than just regularly aggressive, like, streets, it would be best if nobody ever walked through here, it's fine, and I understand, I know you got this big entrance up here, probably to work with your garage door, there's probably a way in.
No, there's a door to-
Oh, there's a door?
That's the vehicle entrance.
That's the vehicle entrance. That's interesting, so everybody from outside, but could, all people to park here could end up, or not all, some of them would go mostly this way? Mostly? Is that true, most of the people to park in this area here?
People, people could be entering from the parking lot through that entrance here.
Otherwise, they'd have to walk all the way to the front?
Or through the garage door.
Oh, they could get through the garage door, but it's not open or, is it open, or is it?
No, I believe it'll be closed, with the most people normally close.
So I guess my only point is, if, if this could be reconfigured to come through this way, it might, that would be preferred by us, I don't mean to say that that matters, the one you have. And the, and the final thing was, I forget the architect's name, sorry, but, we know now that the floodplain is 10, which I thought that is what the floodplain was, the garage floor is 11.75, with the freeboard of one foot?
11.25.
11.25. So, actually, the garage is above the floodplain, I just wanted to bring that up.
That's correct.
And it might mean, there was questions during the architect's presentation, something about living, using that space for some purpose, I don't remember what it was, maybe it was, I don't know, was it use? Maybe it was a habitable use?
Yeah, yeah, the habitable space around the garage.
Yeah, so it is a habitable space.
It's not.
What about the floodplain?
Well, it's not habitable. All right, anybody else have any other questions of this witness? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Helen Yun, I live on 1700 Murmo Building, 1B.
Thank you.
Okay.
This might not be a technical question, it's a general question, how long the two buildings, are they going to go up simultaneously or separately? Like-
We did have that discussion, so Mr. Curly can't answer that.
Okay. So, the dual building, the one facing the, the Del Lake is going up first, right?
That, that will be constructed first, that's correct.
How long is the, how long does it take to, for that to go up?
Approximately 18 to 24 months.
And then after that, you're going to work on the other building, right? Other one?
But it'll be staggered, so, the first building will start, and as it, as it comes up out of the ground, about six months, then the second building will start.
So, so, what is the estimated process, the time, timeframe for all of the construction to be ended? Roughly?
Possibly 24 to 30 months.
Okay.
And I will say that the subsequent developer agreement, and I don't want to call off the top of my head what the timelines are, but does have timelines, so that the construction can't keep going and going, there's a specified time in which we must complete.
Okay. That's, so we basically have to live in our construction for two years.
A lot of people in this town, if you look around.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's just, it's right on my face.
Okay. All right. Great. All right, do we want to go through what we're looking to come back with?
I don't think our landscape architect is going to take a tremendous amount of time, and I think he has some answers to some of the questions you posed earlier, so if we could have him come up and start, I think it would be helpful to the overall process and may eliminate some of the things that you would-
It's a hard stop at 10, so, so if he can do it in 12 minutes plus, then we have to go over everything that has to come back, so.
I'd like to get him started, because I think it'll be helpful to-
Okay, then we need five minutes to, to go through everything that we need to have come back, so. So you got seven minutes.
Mr. Lef, if you could be sworn in?
Please raise your hand, sir, you solemn swear of firm testament about to give this marriage to truth, all truth and all evidence of truth.
I did.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Brian Lef, last name is spelled L-E-F-F.
Mr. Lef, you have been before this board before numerous times and have been accepted as an expert in the field of landscape architecture, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would the board like to hear his credentials repeated, or will you accept him as an expert in the field as you have in the past?
We're good, as long as everything is up to date, as long as all your licenses are up to date, we're good.
Everything's current.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Lef, if you could start discussing the landscaping, and while you're at it, kind of the front design of the stairs in that area.
Sure. Let me start with-
And we will mark Mr. Lef's landscaping package here as exhibit A7.
Okay. Sheet four or five in my plan shows the enlargements of both entrances, they're generally identical, minor changes, as was mentioned before, due to the actual grading, I believe one may have one or two more steps than the other one, which makes things a little wider, a little taller, but for the most part, they're the same. The entry stairs were a unique feature on this project, and it was really driven by the floodplain and the need to bring the building up. The original design that I looked at had a, a long set of stairs coming down the front, it was just one long straight stair run, it kind of looked like a Mayan temple. So we broke that up a little bit, got rid of the long straight run, and ended up with that trapezoidal piece in the front, that blank wall. That got exaggerated when we moved the building slightly closer to Deal Lake. We ran some of the space we had for plantings, became pavement, but we did leave one space with the, a unique stair design along the Deal Lake frontage, there is an area that's shown that's about one foot wide, and I believe I'm currently showing this, a row of perennials there, just to add some kind of interest. But given the concerns with that blank wall, I think what we, what would be a better idea, actually, would be to plant that with something like maybe ivy or another vine, with a small trellis against that wall, that the vine would be encouraged to grow up, and you'd actually have a green wall. We could do that on both buildings, if that pleases the board, that's one way to cover it. Another way, we could also introduce tiles, my preference would be for the green wall, though.
So two quick questions on that, one, not English ivy, I hope.
No, we'd probably use something other than English ivy, I think that's a little overused, it does do well by the shorts, one of the few that handles the salt, but in this case, something like a Virginia creeper might even be appropriate, that would give you the red fall color in there, something that's native, and I don't recommend that for all areas, but in this case, I think something like a Virginia creeper might work in that area.
There's just, one thing, I don't know anything about flowers, let me just throw that out there.
I know Jen does.
I know Jen does. I'm just going to throw this out there. We've had green walls that were put on other buildings, and they have since been taken off because they're dead.
Okay.
So, I'm just concerned about that, they went on the vines, you started out with a green wall, it's gone now. I'm concerned about, the beach club, there were concerns of bees showing up, depending on what the choice is, you know better on the choices than I do, I don't know anything about, I'm just throwing those things out there. Just as statements, I mean, Jen knows a lot better, and as, as does our planner, so you guys can work that out.
But there, that was a twining vine that flowered.
Yeah, flowering vine will draw bees, and probably a bogan veal or something like that, that will attract bees, the Virginia creeper will not.
Okay, you, you guys know better than I do, certainly, go ahead. Go ahead.
I would, I mean, I, I remember that discussion very well, and I would not, not plant a plant because it might attract bees, because, I understand that comment that came up, but I, I mean, I think it's a very bad direction for the city to go, and it's not to plant plants because they attract bees.
I agree, I'm with you.
Thank you, Jen.
I'm with you. I leave that to the professionals.
All right, so that was, that was the first point that I heard this evening, that seemed to be a concern of the board, that I wanted to address up front and offer a solution. The second area that I wanted to talk about really quick, that I know that came up, was the rooftop and the location of the condensers, and what's happening with the rooftop amenity area. As you can see, there's an area for lounge seating, table seating, fire pits, there is an outdoor kitchen area on both of them. What's, to address the concerns of the condensers, which aren't shown on this plan, but are generally in the light gray area, not knowing exactly where they were going to be at the time of the layout of the rooftop, what we did do is put a six-foot screen wall around anywhere that faced the interior of the building, so you'd still be able to look out over the streetscape, but we really didn't want the people on the roof looking at the unfinished portion of the roof or the condenser units, or any other mechanical units. So there is a six-foot screen wall that's located right here, and also along here, and along the southern part. So anywhere that you would be abutting the condensers, does have a six-foot screen wall that would certainly block the view and would assist in attenuating the sound, I'm not a sound engineer to tell you how much it would attenuate, but whenever you put a wall between a source and an object, it does have some attenuation.
I, I still have concern.
What's the, what's the screen wall made of?
That I don't know, it's been, been determined, in my mind, I was thinking like a solid fence, but the architects may want to do something a little more decorative. The bottom line is, it would be a solid six-foot screen, so you wouldn't see the mechanicals while you're on the roof.
I'm just asking for you to do the best you can in order to not, not cause the guests, the people that live there, any reason for them not to want to be on that deck.
No, and I appreciate that, quite honestly, the bigger concern was the neighbors, we were trying to keep the condensers as far away from the adjacent buildings as we could. Other than that, the rest of the site is landscaped fully, pretty, pretty densely, actually, all plants are salt tolerant, most native to New Jersey, native to the coast area, there are some plants, like knockout roses and hydrangeas, that aren't necessarily native, but we see them on every project, they are kind of traditional at the shore, people expect to see them, even though they're not native, they do do well, and unfortunately, as a landscape architect, when we're working at the shore, your hands are kind of cuffed with what will actually grow, so when you find something that works, we tend to use it.
Mr. Lef, there was discussion about increasing the height of the plantings along certain streets, can you point out those streets, and would we would increase the height of the plantings?
Yeah, the two areas were along Webb Street and along Eighth Street, both of them right now show a continuous evergreen hedge up against the building. The intention initially was to have something that would be about two and a half to three feet high, something that wouldn't overwhelm the pedestrian scale at the street level, but we can certainly increase that to something like a skiplarl that will grow to about five five, six feet and helps cover the louvers. Uh, as Donna had mentioned, the plants will be set somewhat away from the wall just to allow room for growth. I can't speak to what that does to the internal circulation of the air or how that works with the louvers. That's more of a mechanical engineering question. Uh, but I, the plants will at least partially screen the louvers, uh, and take up some of that blank wall that was concerning.
I think, just because I know we're gonna go to what's, what we need to think on for the next hearing, your concern is probably less with the louvers and more with the blank wall. Is that correct?
Right, that, that, we're, I believe that we're concerned just to make sure that that wall isn't a big blank wall, that, that, that the plantings are, and I'm also concerned that the plantings aren't like, well, they will grow to be. It's kind of like, well, where are we starting from?
You want the sudden impact.
Right. We want, we want...
And that's why I suggested if we, if we change the plant to something like a skip laurel, it will be available at a size that's five feet tall, whereas if you stick with something like a yew, uh, that will eventually grow that tall, most likely you're not gonna find it in any kind of quantity greater than three feet.
Yeah.
Uh, so we can adjust the planting type to give you something that's immediately gonna give you what you're looking for and still have room to grow.
Okay. All right, do we want to go over the items that, uh, that we, that are coming back for next time, or are we, are we done with, with our landscape architect? We still have more?
I think that was what I had to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up. I don't believe there were any specific comments in the letters other than a question on one of the plant heights, and I'll just say that the, uh, great myrtle that was brought to our attention is an ornamental tree that's typically sold by height and not by the caliber size.
I had only one question, comment, and it's, uh, the Deal Lake Drive frontage, there's two trees that are actually in the right of way. When I first looked at this, it seems like they're almost obscuring the, the entry of the building, um, but it sounds like those were like kind of mandated by the city and are not...
They, they were specifically requested at the TRC to add taller trees near the entrance, uh, along with the full-length stairs that go across. Even though they come up to a blank wall, it still gives people to sit, uh, along the street front, uh, so they do have some utility, even though they appear to be staircase to nowhere.
One quick question. There was a question about whether you were capping, putting a cap on the retaining wall.
Yeah, so there is a detail in the plans, I believe on the last sheet, uh, that shows a detail of the stairs, and it does call out the limestone cap on the retaining wall.
So by having a limestone cap, that creates more of a bench seating type area, correct?
Correct.
Any questions by any of the board members?
Very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so those little notes, I mean, the, where the benches will be on Eighth and Webb, it'll basically be a cutout into the...
Yeah, and that way, if the bench should fail, you can always replace the bench without having to redo the retaining wall or anything else. So if the bench comes out, you're just gonna have a concrete pad surrounded by three sides of a retaining wall. Uh, but we're not planning on removing the benches. I don't see that happening anytime. Uh, we will have a bench in there.
Okay. All right. Do we want to go over what, what we're looking for to come back?
Well, I would, if the witnesses' testimony has concluded, we should ask for anyone that wants to cross-examine, so we don't have to carry that through the next meeting.
Yep, yep. You think that I already asked if the board or the professionals have any other questions? No? Uh, no one in the public? Anyone in the public? You sure you don't wanna? Okay. All right, we're good to go.
All right. This is Ms. 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 Where the address is going to be put onto the building, which, which really has to do with the blank wall and the steps and figuring out what's gonna happen in that area. That all kind of like goes together. Um, there was, you were going to add the, the metal of the garage to the materials sheet. Um, I think that just knowing that, I don't know if we're gonna be doing different renderings for the, the taller plantings, or if we're just going to leave it as the fact that we've committed to that. We don't really need to see it.
We're committing to that. I don't think we need to revise that.
All right, and the, uh, there was adding the signage of the architect.
I'm sorry, that...
The signage for the architect?
We could handle that as a condition of approval, to be honest. It's a small plaque somewhere.
No, no, right, because we, we didn't know what was gonna happen to that stairway. So there were a lot of things being thrown around for that. Uh, the gutters, we need to understand what's gonna happen with the gutters in the front of the building where the people are walking.
Yeah, I think the testimony was that the gutter can be added to go across the cap of the building there and then connect into the, into the roof.
So it will be added, not...
We could, as a condition of approval, we can, we can show the gutters. I'm just looking back to make sure I'm, yes?
Yes.
I'm summarizing correctly.
So there are three things. One is the pitched roof area.
Yes.
The shed roof area, and then the canopy. And the shed roof kind of drips onto the balconies, but there doesn't seem to be a good way to catch it. Is that right?
I think that, that was the testimony. Right.
And then, um, but they can work something out with drainage off the canopy.
Right, that's what we want, so that nobody is...
So you have the canopy and the pitched roof.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I don't know if that's something that has to be on the plan, or if that's a condition, that's fine, we can do the, do it as a condition, but you need to know, I mean, we need to know that you're doing that.
As a condition of approval, we can add gutters to the shed roof areas to show how that will tie into the roof and the roof drains. Okay.
Right.
See, I can, I can be an architect temporarily.
All right. Um, we, we brought in the new lantern lights that, that we're going to use. We brought, we brought that in, so that's okay.
Yep.
Um, we need, uh, the Eighth and Webb, the colors in landscaping. We were gonna discuss that, the colors of that whole area. I think it was Eighth and Webb that you'd mentioned.
Do you want them to bring a material sample so you can actually tell the color?
It's up to...
Or do you just want to rely on this, what they've specked on the sheet?
Because, because it's not the right...
I'm asking me?
Yeah, because you brought...
I'm asking everybody.
I think with the additional landscaping, that's all I needed, but other people had...
I brought up the color.
Right, the colors.
That wasn't on Webb, that was on, um...
Was on...
That was on...
Eighth and...
Um, I did have concerns all around, but the image that we're looking at was on Deal Lake Drive, the main, where the, um, main entrance is.
Just so I under, because I want to make sure that we addressed whatever the issues. You weren't asking for a color change, it was just, or what were you looking for?
I'm just concerned that it was all the same, that the retaining walls, where the handicapped access, the stairwell, I mean, all that, that one image that we kept pointing, I kept pointing.
It all looked like it was the same color.
Yes, which I think it is the same color.
But that was the one without landscaping.
So that would require a color change.
That's right.
Yes, but landscapes are not always...
Would, would it texture change?
Yeah, I was saying, I, I don't like seeing it all in color, but if I'm only one, then it's, I'm only one person.
I'd like to see the actual color.
Yeah, I'd like to see a sample.
A sample would help, because it's just because the one image showed, the rendering showed one thing, and then the, you know, it's not exact, but one would just look very beige, like dark tan, as far as the eye could see. I understand there's to be plants, but plants aren't there with leaves all season and, um, you know, so if that whole, if all of the retaining wall, staircase facade, um, is all the same, then that's the answer. I mean, I mean, I don't like it, but that's, I'm one person.
We prefer not to be that.
I think, I mean, it's a beige and a white, right? Those are the two colors that are proposed. I don't, I mean, other than, I, I don't know, are you asking us to change some of it to white, to, that's beige, or...
Well, I'm saying that the image that I saw, that was, did not have any landscape renderings on it.
Right.
Was like a darker, the color on here, I don't know, I don't know what the true color is. It was, it was like a darker...
It was all beige.
Beige, like a dark beige, and then another rendering was a much lighter, and I just want to know what it is.
Could we see, um, samples?
We, we can bring back a sample, yes.
Of, of the color that's gonna be on the face.
We'll, we'll, we'll hold up a sample. Is that, that's all needed, right? Okay.
I think that'd be helpful, because there is quite a discrepancy in the renderings as to what the colors are, and I'd like to see what you propose.
Right, because, because, because what, what was mentioned a lot was like, oh, it's a shadow, it's a light, it's a, what is it? You know, what, what are the colors? What are the colors? I think that samplings would be very good. Um, there was a, there was a question about what about, about the, the fence, the north fence? Is it blocking anything? What's going on with that, that fence? We need to, we need to understand what's going on with that.
We'll have our planner address that. Yep.
Um, no, I think that, and, and also where we're moving the ADA spot, we just need that redrawn.
We can do that as a condition of approval. I think that's...
You want to do that, as that?
Do you want it as a condition of approval?
I would like to, I always like to see things. I mean, I like to see what we're doing, because you're coming back anyway.
Well, yes, but if we come back, that means the whole team has to come back, as opposed to having our planner come back.
Well, and the turnaround time for the plan, so if we're trying to just schedule for coming back at the next meeting or within, you know, 30 days, uh, they would need to pre-agree to produce all those changes, and I don't, I don't know that, you know, they have that time. Do we have it, Marie? Do we have an idea when they would be coming back?
We do, yeah. Barbara and I discussed it earlier. So basically, the next meeting is, that's available, that has any availability, would be May 19. That would put us at, normally it would be five, the five weeks. So that would put us at April 14 for all deadlines, which would be...
Pretty soon.
Seven days.
And the next one was, was on 6/16?
Five weeks. Do you need a five-week term to redo it?
No, I need three weeks, but then the next available date after that, because we have other stuff that's already been allotted, slotted in, is gonna be June 16, and everything will be...
We'll take the May, because honestly, the, what you've asked us to take a look at, I mean, moving a parking space, we could probably have a concept drawn up for that pretty easily. You've asked us to provide a color sample, that's not gonna take a lot of time. I'm looking at the list here, there's not a ton of planned changes that you've asked for us, so I don't, I don't see it as being an issue to come back on May 19.
I don't know if anybody else has anything else that they're, that they're wanting to see?
Marie, April 28 is when I need them.
So we can submit, like I said, I don't think it's, it's not gonna be full plans, it'll be, so April 28?
Yeah, April 28.
Yeah.
If you want me to do a revised report, or Sam to do a revised report, to address everything?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, especially since the lighting changed so much, I would like to be able to update that section.
Yep.
Okay. So April...
So, so that's what, that's, what, what's the date for the...
That would be for May 19.
Okay, for May 19.
Wouldn't it be possible to have a photograph of the greenery that's being proposed, for those of us who don't know what these plans look like?
The Virginia creeper?
Yeah, I have no idea what a Virginia creeper is.
We, we could do a photograph of the Virginia creeper. I'll make a note of that.
Barbara, was the architect going to see what he could do about the stairways, the front of the seat?
That's what we requested, that.
But specifically showing the vines.
Uh, what, what we could do, I mean, if vines is what you think is the best thing?
That was, that was a testimony we just had. I think that's the best, the best option.
I thought the architect said that he would review the stairwell, stairways, and see what he could do to change it to make it...
But the, the civil engineer and the landscape architect both showed that we've, I think their testimony was that we have evaluated multiple times what could be done, as far as reducing widths and whatnot, and they've scrunched it as much as they can, as far as turning that stairwell. I don't, I don't think the overall layout of the stairwell is able to change at this point, but the blank wall in front, a decorative aspect there, whether it's plantings, I think that we could provide plans or provide, um, a photograph with this resubmission.
All right, everybody?
Hang, hang on.
Okay.
What, what were the exhibits you guys presented tonight?
So we, I will go through them quickly. We had exhibit...
As far as the revised, either site or architecture?
So A1 was a revised architecture package that was dated March 27. A2 was the cut sheet of the Dark Sky compliant lantern. A3 was sheet three of 14 from Site Civil that had been updated and resubmitted at the end of March. A4 was the entire submitted site plan sheet that had been submitted previously, the one that you had reviewed. Um, A5 was the updated lighting sheet that had been submitted as an exhibit. A6 was the construction logistics plan that is attached to the subsequent developer agreement, and A7 was the most recent landscape package.
All right. Can I get a motion to, uh...
Motion to adjourn?
To carry?
Uh, to carry?
To carry to May 19 with no further notice?
And that's at 7:00 PM, correct?
7:00 PM.
And I need you to represent that you will extend any time within which to operate.
Yes, we'll extend through that meeting. Thank you.
Revised plan is submitted by, uh, April 28.
There's no...
Revised submissions, hold on, sorry. Revised submissions by, uh, April 28 for all revised submissions.
Yes, we will do that.
All right, I make a motion, motion to carry to May 19 with no further notice?
The second was Jim.
Where's Oliver?
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
We have to, we have.
Yes.
Oh, Jen Souter?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Korsak?
Yes. Motion to adjourn. All right. All in favor?
All right.